Good evening and welcome to the August 22, 2023 meeting in the Milton Select Board. Before we begin, please join us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Item three is public comment. For public comment, we ask those in attendance here to step up to the seat and microphone and put their name and address and introduce themselves. And then for those online to raise their hand and we'll try to go back and forth between people who are here and people who are online. We recently changed our policy on this to increase public comment to 21 minutes. So that would allow for seven speakers at a maximum of three minutes apiece. So Mr. Milano will keep track of the 21 minutes. I'll keep track of the three minutes. If you can keep your remarks to three minutes, that would be, that would be great. So I don't know if we want to start. It looks like we have someone online. Why don't we start online and then we'll go to here, we'll go to in person. So it looks like, is it Mr. Cristo? Is he first? Has he been promoted?
Yes.
Mr. Cristo, are you there? I think you muted, sir. Mr. Cristo?
Nick asked him to unmute, but he still muted.
Yeah, I don't see, he's been promoted, is that right?
Yep.
All right, maybe we'll, Mr. Cristo, if you could unmute yourself, you can get started. Otherwise, we may come back to you. Anything left on that?
Nothing.
Oh, all right. Looks like he's been promoted now. All right, well, why don't we go to the first person in person? Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Judith Cohen. I live at 109 Capen Street and I have lived in Milton for 26 years. Thank you for this opportunity to speak about why I support the MBTA Communities Act. I work as a housing advocate for homeless and at-risk families, so I am well aware of the lack of available, never mind affordable, housing in Massachusetts. And I think we are all aware of the climate crisis that we are facing now and that our children are inheriting. Both of these issues would be positively addressed through the MBTA Communities Act. Therefore, I am definitely in favor of cooperating with the state's mandate for Milton to comply with the requirements of the act, as our town planner, Tim Churwinski, is working so hard to do. I also hope, of course, that at least 10% of any new housing or apartments that are developed to comply with the MBTA Communities Act will be made affordable according to the area median income formula. Also, I do not think our town should put itself in a position where we would lose any of the state funding that is tied to compliance with the act. And in a broader sense, I would like to state my personal belief that Milton will only be more enriched by welcoming new working individuals and families into our neighborhoods. And now we have the opportunity to take the first steps towards this goal through the vision of the MBTA Communities Act. I certainly know that the families I work with would benefit from all that Milton has to offer while giving back to a community they would be so grateful to join. And finally, I like to put bumper stickers on my car, and I recently, I recently got one that says, "We all do better when we all do better," and I believe that is true. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. All right, why don't we go to, is it Martha Soucy, is she the next one? Ms. Martha Soucy, if we could have her promoted?
Hello, Lou, can you hear me?
We can, Ms. Soucy. If you could just give us your, give us your address, that'd be great.
Yes, I'm at 1250 Randolph Ave in Milton. And I'd just like to comment on the response letter from the Mass DOT regarding the roundabout at Randolph Ave. I feel that Mass DOT did not address any of the Select Board's concerns, and it seems they're just gonna go ahead because it's already 75% designed and they're looking at safety. We have over 1,800 signatures that are against us. We don't feel like this is the safest option and it's the most expensive. And I know that's why that you had written the letter, to have them address these issues. So I'd like to ask for the Select Board to maybe work with the town of Milton to somehow put a legal stop to this until the studies can further be viewed and examined. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Soucy. All right, why don't we have the next person here, Mr. Driscoll?
I'd like to thank all the board members for giving up their time for this, doing your job. But I got a couple of things to bring up. One, I was talking to Mr. Thomas today, Thomas, my son Bunny Thomas, and he would like you, the town planner, to take his property off the available list for the MBTA zoning. He never even asked Mr. Thomas anything about the property and nothing, and he can't fathom how he can even bring it up, his property even talk about being about the MBTA zoning. And from what I understood today, behind my whole house, there's all kinds of talk about doing the MBTA zoning up behind me. Behind my house, right behind my house, is a residential house, and it's gonna be a 40-unit building, a 40B. I went through the 40B and it's not fun. I'm telling anybody here, it's not great to go through. Everybody listens to you, but they don't do much for you. And I spent thousands and thousands of dollars to protect the easement that my family uses. Now to come to find out that the town planner has all kinds of development up behind my house, the access road, the horse farm, and we already got 90 units going across the street, we got 40 behind my house, there's 130 units that we've done good, you know, we've given to the town. So I don't think it's fair that we're gonna talk about units up around there. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Mr. Driscoll.
His address.
I think we know John's address. All right. All right, now I think we're, Joe Soucy is the next one on the list? And I don't want to forget Mr. Cristo if he wants to raise his hand again and get on there, because we want to do our best. But I think Mr. Soucy?
He's joining now.
Okay. Mr. Soucy, you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can. If you could just give your address and go ahead, sir.
Absolutely. I'm at 1241 Adam Street. I'm actually right over the line in Boston, but I grew up and spent my whole life at 1250 Randolph Ave, along with my whole family, right across the street at Souzy Lane. I basically wanted to reiterate what my mother had said about the DOT's response to the roundabout. You know, we, we put together the petition, we've got a lot of support, we have came up with solutions and presented them at numerous meetings. You know, we hired Paul Hogan to try to come to our defense to, you know, put this thing to bed, because it seems like the state of Massachusetts is just jamming this down our throat. And unfortunately, we're gonna be the ones that live with this and suffer because of it, when in fact, there are cheaper and quicker solutions that it seems they are not taking into consideration. Thank you for your time, and I hope you consider what we're saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Soucy. I do want to check, again, did we see Mr. Cristo? Yeah, I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, Mark who rejoined, who I presume is him.
Is that, oh, is he promoted?
Not at the moment.
Okay, all right. Well, why don't we, why don't we go to the next person in person, if there's another person in person?
Hi, good evening.
You can, you can bring up another chair, sir. I don't want to make you stand.
Hi, good evening.
You can just make sure you're talking to the microphone so everyone can hear you.
Michael Clark, town resident since 1989. I've lived at 1169 Brook Road since 2001.
John Potter, 24 Sheldon Street since 1984.
All right, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, absolutely. So we're here for public comment this evening, related to the Milton Yacht Club, the Town Landing, the RFPs, and then what has come out of that process. You know, we've got a short period of time, but you know, we have, there's been three public RFPs across the last five, six years. The Milton Yacht Club were the only respondents to the first two. In this last one, it was Milton Yacht Club and Nippon's Rowing. There was some success with the RFPs, but you know, the yacht club has existed down there for 120 years. We've been stewards of the land, of the waterfront, you know, we run cleanups in the spring and also in the fall, you know, we keep everything up and running down there for access, promoted access for town residents and non-town residents to use the waterfront. There's lots of things I could go into and points to talk about that. However, we continue to find ourselves put in a position where, you know, we're having to be asked to give more for less. We've been tenants at will since 2014, paying an approximate lease of $15,000 annually, again, I'm rounding numbers here, up until this century. So before 2000, annual rent was $100, okay? So when the town needed us to come through, when money was tight at the turn of the century, we did that. But we don't feel like we're getting anything reciprocal. We don't think we're getting any attention outside the landing committee. You know, I have had the opportunity to listen into several of the Zoom meetings. I emphasize listen, because there is no public comment allowed. People have tried to ask questions and immediately get shut down by the chairman. But nonetheless, we have made offer on the RFP, basically equivalent to what we've been paying annually, with a 30% reduction in allowable space, that other 30% being awarded to the Nippon's Valley group. At the last meeting, there was a vote taken by the landing committee to issue an evacuation notice for the boat storage yards. We have not been given an award for either one of those parcels of property, which are considered lots A and B in the storage yard. And that, that represents about two-thirds of the annual income into the club. So without boat storage...
30 seconds.
Yes, thank you very much. Without boat storage, the town is in effect forcing us out. You know, there have been talks about dredging, having an MBTA boat, commuter boat come up. Anyone who's familiar with the river and a boater, it's just not possible. Initial estimates for dredging have come in at 25 to 37 million, initial estimates. Not that Milton would bore all of that, but there would be a percentage. With everything we have going on, fire stations, public schools, I just don't see how that's gonna happen.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do I also get three minutes, sir?
Well, if we could go, if we could go to, if we could go to some, go to someone online and then we'll come back to you.
Certainly.
I think that's fair. So next one, next on the...
Sure, Mr. Parent.
Is it Pete Jackson or? Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're correct. We're taking him out of order. I'll go back to Pete.
Yeah. Mr. Parent, we're gonna, Mr. Jackson was ahead of you, so we're gonna go to Mr. Jackson first.
Sure, not a problem.
Thank you. Hello, Pete? Pete, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. I had to go through the process of becoming a panelist.
All right.
Peter Jackson, 14 Capen Street. I'm here to talk tonight. I'll reserve my comments to the item six that appounded, the MBTA community zoning, housing. I'm concerned because your agenda indicates that Section C, letters A, B, and C are for discussion and approval. I question whether the letters A and B are anywhere close to being ready for approval. In particular, I am vehemently opposed to the sub-districts put forward for the half-mile transit area. I can understand setting aside the most significant sections of the Milton Hill Historic District to protect its integrity. However, no coherent justification has been given for the sub-districts 1 through 7 or the differences between them. Most concerning is eliminating almost all the area between a quarter mile and a half mile from the stations with no significant explanation. Part of my problem is a concern about equity and fairness. Sub-districts 1 through 5 are the most dense, least affluent, and most diverse parts of the transit area. There, the areas between a quarter mile and a half mile, or between a half mile, a quarter mile and a half mile are almost totally eliminated from the proposed sub-districts where zoning would change. This is not fair, it's not equitable, and there's a lot more work to be done before a scheme for sub-districts is approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. All right, Mr., I'm sorry.
John Potter.
Mr. Potter.
Yes. Thank you. I'll just speak at the last Milton Landing Board Committee, I think it was July 28. Once again, the public could not comment. And we were asked to vacate yacht A and yacht B. Yacht A, we did vacate last June 15, as we normally do annually, and we count on Boatyard B for our boat storage. Milton Yacht Club works differently than other yacht clubs you might be more familiar with. We are located, of course, in a tidal basin. We have to deal with those extremities, and people have to accept that fact when they come down there with members, with members with large boats or small boats, whatever. You can only go out at certain times of the day. Restricts a lot of activity. That's why our membership is cheap, cheaper than other clubs, I should say. And the boat storage is really what we count on to support ourselves. And without Boatyard B, which was just voted on to vacate, which would be quite difficult to do overnight, we would find it very, almost impossible to exist without some boat storage. We rely on it. And that was taken. I haven't heard a thing since the July meeting. I know it's August, a lot of people go away, but some response would be good. We did accept a lease, a very low bid lease on the yacht club building itself. We signed it, sent it in. Once again, I have had no response to that yet either. And we're waiting on that. So things that occur at these Zoom meetings with no public comment seem to just go away until the next Zoom meeting comes along with no public comment. And that's the way we've been working for the last couple of years, privileged to talk to you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, do we have Mr. Cristo?
Mr. Parents is here.
Oh, Mr. Parent, okay. We don't want to lose Mr. Cristo if he's here, because he, he was first. Oh, all right. Just give him one more chance, Mr. Cristo, one more chance to raise his hand, and then we'll go to Mr. Cristo. How much more time do we have next?
I have eight minutes.
Eight minutes. Oh, okay, so we have time. All right, let's go to Mr. Parent then. Mr. Parent?
Members of the board, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. My address is 83 Sassamon Ave in Precinct 9. I'm in full support of the MBTA communities, and I encourage the town to embrace the opportunity that the state is offering. I am a real estate developer by profession, and I'm speaking tonight not only as a resident, but to provide insight into the conversations that I'm having with fellow real estate developers. I feel there's too much time being spent on how to reclassify from rapid transit to adjacent community, and not enough time placed, not enough time to place necessary regulations for the future of the town. MBTA communities is not, and I repeat, not about affordable housing. It is about housing creation. As a developer, here are some of the topics that I've had with my fellow colleagues. We would buy a piece of property within a half-mile radius of rapid transit, file for building permit for multifamily development, receive denial because of the town's current zoning, take the denial straight to the AG's office and demand that the office enforce the state law. This is not only for Milton that I'm making these comments, and as a resident, I would not put the town in a negative position, but surrounding towns and other developers are thinking of creative ways to develop multifamily in various neighborhoods. I've lived in the town for three years, and it's no surprise to me that there are so many 40B projects in queue. Developers have used the state law to their advantage because the town's inaction to allow for affordable housing. To a developer, MBTA communities is a ticket to bypass ZBA. Not to have regulation in place is risky, and I can assure you, creative developers will take advantage of inaction, as they did with 40B. So we encourage you to embrace the opportunity the state is offering, to put regulation in place to protect the fabric of the town into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parent. Anyone else in person? Going once, going twice. You don't see anyone there. What about online, Mr. Milano?
I'll try Mark now.
What's that?
I'll try Mr. Cristo now.
Okay.
There we go.
Is he here?
Yep.
Mr. Cristo?
Hello, Mr. Chairman? Can you hear me?
Mr. Cristo, we've been trying to get you on here for the last 20 minutes, so it's nice to hear your voice.
I know, I'm sorry. I'm like a five-year-old when it comes to technology. I have my sister helping me out now with her laptop. My apologies, my fault.
The problem might have been on our end, so don't, don't, please don't apologize. Go ahead, sir. If you could just give your address, go ahead.
Okay. I like to talk about MBTA community, and I disagree with the last call. I think we need to spend more time on reclassification. And I'll just point out that reclassification and compliance are two separate things, and we do, I do support compliance, but I want to make sure that we get the reclassification right. And to that end, I have to say that I was disappointed with the letter that did go out to the MBTA, because we kind of missed, I think, on really the heart of the matter. And in that first draft at the outset, it talks about that the town's requesting the review for an inaccurate rapid transit classification and the impacts of town's efforts to comply with the MBTA Communities Act. That's really an important thing, and the MBTA needs to know that and where we stand on that. And I think that, you know, that and the second point being that the 1960s campaign to convert the Matapan Trolley to rapid transit, to exclude that, with so much factual evidence, was, was, was not, doesn't strengthen the argument. That project to convert the Matapan Trolley line by extending the rapid transit line from Ashmont to Matapan would have provided a treasure trove of information and data, an actual model of a rapid transit line in our, in our domain to compare and to contrast. And, you know, what would have it been if it had been integrated? We would, we would have that to refer to it versus what we actually have today, which is not rapid transit, in my estimation. Instead, we've refocused the conversation upon the Matapan reformation or the renovation of the line, which is an important facet too, and I want for that. But it's not incorporation into the rapid transit line, and we need to state that. We should have stated that, quite frankly, in the, in the letter. And that reformation is, it's a proposal at this point. Nothing is set in stone, and as we know, the rapid transit campaign that was, that has been taken off the table, was, is, would have expanded upon those matters related to, it has more importance, I think, than just the reformation project, which is a bit diminutive in a sense. With that, I think that it would be beneficial for us as well to, before you cast votes on this plan, we need to continue with discussions, 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 just as the planning board has been doing for months. And I think that we need to open up the discussion to all residents in Milton and have a kind of an assembly in the high school auditorium whereby all of us could participate in this process, because it's just much too important for our community.
Mr. Cristo, just, Mr. Cristo, just 20 seconds if you could.
Okay. From what I understand, quite frankly, only about 99% of the residents aren't paying attention to this, and we need to get more people engaged before decisions are made. So I ask you to hold on the vote for tonight, and I think that we need to focus on the reclassification so that we could see compliance. That's my point for tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Good timing. Very well, very well timed. Do we have any more time?
I have two minutes, 50 seconds.
Two minutes. Anyone, anything further online or in person?
I tripped.
All right, I don't see any, no one online there?
Nope.
All right. Item four is introduction welcome for Jay Gonzalez, president of Curry College. Mr. Gonzalez is with us. Let me just introduce Mr. Gonzalez. He is the 15th president of Curry College, and he's the first Hispanic leader of the college. Most recently, Mr. Gonzalez served as a partner at Hinckley Allen, where his primary practice was representing cities and towns and governmental energies and governmental entities, and financing and developing capital projects and other governmental programs. Mr. Gonzalez began his career in public, as a public finance lawyer, and eventually became a partner at the firm that is now known as Lock Lord. After the election of Massachusetts Governor DeVal Patrick, Mr. Gonzalez left the legal profession to work in state government, and was appointed to serve as Secretary of Administration and Finance. In that role, Mr. Gonzalez successfully managed a $32 billion state budget during the Great Recession, and oversaw 3,500 employees in 18 state agencies, including the Department of Revenue. After his time in state government, Mr. Gonzalez served as the president and CEO of Celtic Care Health Plan in Massachusetts and New Hampshire Healthy Families, which provided health insurance coverage to low-income people in state, on state Medicaid programs. Following his time in healthcare, Mr. Gonzalez was the Democratic candidate for Governor of Massachusetts, and was elected to be the Democratic nominee in the 2018 general election. From 2020 to 2022, Mr. Gonzalez was an adjunct lecturer at Northeastern University School of Law, and he's been engaged in a number of public, civic, and charitable causes since that time. Mr. Gonzalez was born and raised in Cleveland, Ohio. He's a graduate of Dartmouth College and Georgetown University Law Center, and he has been in the Boston era since 1998, Mr. Gonzalez. I hope I didn't miss anything.
Mr. Chairman, I think you're the first person to actually read that entire thing. So thank you for the generous introduction and the opportunity to meet with the entire Select Board. It's great to be with you, and I am very excited to be a new member of the Milton community. I obviously know Milton. I've been to Milton many times, but I'm excited to learn more about the community. And a lot of the background you mentioned, in that background, I have a lot of experience working in municipal governments, with municipal governments. And I just want to say, based on that experience, I know what a hard job all of you have. I have great appreciation for people who step up and put themselves out and sit in meetings like this to try to improve their communities, and great appreciation for all municipal employees who work every day to make their communities better. So I want to thank you. Now, as a member of the Milton community, I want to thank you, my representatives, for everything you do to make this community better. I think, as you mentioned at some point in there, I'm now the president of Curry College, which... which I'm thrilled about. I know all of you and probably all of the attendees here know at least a bit about Curry College, but just in case you don't, just a very quick intro on who we are. We are a nonprofit, private college, long-rich history. It was founded in eighteen seventy-nine, eventually created a beautiful one hundred and thirty-one acre campus in the southwestern part of the town. We've got close to two thousand students, mostly undergrad. We do have a few grad programs. We've got a lot of strong academic offerings in nursing, business, criminal justice, marketing, communications, a number of other areas. We have a number of supports for students we're very proud of. And I've been learning, we've got a great dedicated team of staff, faculty and others who care deeply about furthering our mission, which is all about preparing our students for success in career and in life, being good citizens, having good communication skills and critical thinking skills, and providing for them a diverse, inclusive community right here in Milton. So I'm thrilled to be a part of the Curry community and the broader Milton community and there, I appreciate the opportunity to come introduce myself and just share a bit from you and with you and about my thinking and would love to hear anything you have to share that you think I should know about Curry or our relationship with the town. I take a few things very seriously in terms of our being a member of this community. One is, I want to make sure that we continue to be and find ways to be a better corporate citizen and a member of this community. I understand, since I started just over three weeks ago, we've hosted, I believe, members of the school department for some meetings on campus. We either have or about to host a number of recreation teams at our athletic facilities, which is something I understand we've done over time. And I'm sure there are other ways in which we have worked with you in the past and will be happy to find ways that make sense for us to be good members of the, of the community. The other thing I want to say is I want to make sure that we're a good neighbor. For those who know our campus, you know that we are in the middle of a residential area and the activities of a college sometimes require our doing stuff that aren't always consistent with the activities of a residential area. And it's important that we be sensitive to that dynamic and it'll be important to me to make sure that we've got good lines of communication with, with our neighbors and we're listening and doing what we can to live peacefully and in harmony and to be good neighbors. The last thing I want to say is, I want to explore ways for us to be good partners with the town. I have some, I've heard a lot of good things about the relationship between our public safety officers on campus and the Milton Police and Fire. I've actually requested a meeting that I believe is being set up with your police and fire chiefs and our public safety officers, just so I can learn more about the ways in which we work together and explore whether there are ways in which we can be better partners in that way. I have a meeting on the books with your, I think, new superintendent of schools so that we'll get to know each other and explore whether there are ways for us to partner. And I'm interested in, and open to whether there are other ways in which we can partner and, and create win-win situations for the town and for the college. I was in a meeting the other day with folks in our library who are going to be hosting Curry Author Events, faculty members who publish books and host events where they can talk about and engage with students and faculty and others. One of the things I was wondering is, is that an opportunity to bring people from the community on campus and whether there might be other programming opportunities that would work for us to make available to people in the community? We're sitting in your Council of Aging. I don't know whether there's programming like the events I talked about that might make sense for us to partner with your Council on Aging to make available to seniors in the community. I haven't thought a lot about this yet. I'm still learning a ton even about what we do at Curry, but I'm sure there are opportunities for us to partner in ways that are good for the town and, and good for the college. So with that, I'll stop talking and interested in anything you have to say or share. And mostly, I just want to say, I'm excited to be a member of this community and I really appreciate the chance to meet with you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Comments or questions from the members?
Sure.
Ms. Musto.
Thank you. First of all, welcome to the community and welcome to Curry. I was going to say that I think it would be great if you had some kind of a neighborhood meeting to meet the neighbors that live in that area and hear from the neighbors, you know, what types of issues it may or may not be. They usually do host, you know, a meeting once or twice a year for neighbors, so I think that would be great if you were at one of those, especially where you're new to the community and you'd be able to hear firsthand from neighbors. So I think that would be a good thing.
Thank you for the suggestion and this may shock you, but I have heard from a neighbor or two and connected and one who's even offered to help old neighbors together to host something like that. So it is on my list and something that I'm hoping to do in the near future.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Zoll.
Thank you so much as a fellow Buckeye transplant and as a fellow.
I could just tell you were a good wholesome person, yeah.
Well, you know, we both moved here.
Yes, we did.
And very happily. And also someone who works in the higher ed space, I'm delighted that you're here and that you're talking with the town. I'm particularly delighted to hear that you're talking with the schools and thinking about hosting team and sports events. We have a pretty severe shortage of good playing fields in the town and while there's some work underway to, to try to, you know, create some better spaces, I think that's a very generous offer and I think there's probably a lot of, there'll be a lot of interest from the town and the, and the teams particularly, I'm thinking of soccer, but other teams too, thinking about how maybe, you know, some of the younger kids who might not necessarily damage fields the way that older kids would, but who also need places to play, could potentially take advantage and it might be great opportunities for the Curry students to think about, you know, coaching or getting involved with, with some of those programs. So I think that would be really fantastic. And I'm, I'm not too far away from the campus, so I'm really delighted that you're also working to meet with some of the neighbors as well as, as Ms. Musto has suggested. I think that's a great suggestion. So welcome and look forward to future partnerships with Curry.
Thank you. And I should say, the use of the playing fields by some of the Milton teams has been happening, I think, and a request came across my desk a couple of days ago for, to allow some more teams to use the facilities, which we decided we would. So I think it's happening and we'll continue to help in, in that way when we can.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Brown.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I actually worked with you when you were Secretary of A and F. I worked for Senator Spolka at the time, she's now Senate President, and she was the Chair of Children and Families, so we were working a lot on the children's budget. So, so we didn't work closely together. You probably had no idea who I was, but you were very influential in my, my budget line items, so thank you for that.
I hope I was helpful.
You were, you were. And I look forward to working with you in this new role here in the, in the town. And if there's any way that we can support you as well, I think that that's something that you mentioned that really rang true to me, is that it's got to be a give and take and it's got to be a line of open communication. So I appreciate that and I look forward to also supporting not only you, but the students at Curry to find Milton as a wonderful place for the next four years.
Thank you for that and I.
Exactly. That's what everybody says when I talk.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it and I'm glad to be reintroduced and to be working with you again.
Well, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. It seems to me there is a longstanding partnership between the town and the college and we look forward to that continuing and even, and growing in new and other areas as, as we move forward. So we're looking forward to, I know that, you know, our town administrator from your past lives and so, so hopefully that kind of connection will help us work together in ways that we haven't even thought of before.
I look forward to it and you're very fortunate to have the town administrator you do. He does a great job and I'm excited to be working with him again, too.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thanks for the opportunity.
All right, if there's no objection, I'd like to move item seven, which is the, the discussion approval of the Kidder Branch deed up, because I think it will be a relatively quick item and we need to sign this, so a closing can occur tomorrow and the closing is scheduled. So if, if there's no objection, I'd like to move up item seven. So, and I think we have the council for the Kidder Library here, Ms. McCetrick. And so, item seven is discussion approval, transfer the deed from the former Kidder Branch Library to the Discovery Schoolhouse. And Mr. Milano, if you want to tee this up and just tell us what we're doing here.
Sure. As you recall, at the town meeting in May, Article twenty-seven was to authorize the select board to convey the former Kidder Branch Library to Discovery Schoolhouse. And that's what you have in front of you. The deed has been reviewed by Council for Discovery as well as Murphy Essie-Tumulay and Attorney Peter Melfelty has been working with Attorney McCetrick on this. So the deed is prepared for your signature, approved by our council as well as the council for the bank and council for Discovery. And that's all I had on this.
All right. Comments or questions on item seven?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Brown.
I'd like to make a motion to vote to execute the deed from the Town of Milton to Discovery Schoolhouse, Inc. for consideration in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars in accordance with the affirmative vote of Article twenty-seven of the May second, two thousand and twenty-three town meeting.
Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Zoll by a hair.
Sorry.
Any, any, oh, it's going to be a roll call vote, yes. Yes, it will, thank you. And our crack administrator, Lyndon Appleby, made sure that we're going to do a roll call vote here because I might have missed it. So any, any other comments or questions? Or Ms. McCetrick, if you have anything that you want to offer before we go ahead and vote on this?
Just want to say, thank you very much for moving the agenda item up. This is just the last step and pretty long process for all of us, including Discovery Schoolhouse. We really appreciate your getting to this tonight. If you sign the deed, actually sign it tonight, I'll be able to do the notary, since I'm a notary. That means the deed will be ready so that we probably can close tomorrow. Everything else is in place, so just want to say thank you.
So I, thank you, Ms. McCetrick, and I think what we may try to do is if we have a positive vote on this, is actually sign it right now and then you can notarize it and then you can go on your way and we can get this all done. If that works for everyone. So, any further discussion? So we all those in favor? Will there be a roll call vote? Thank you, got it. Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
And Mr. Zoll is yes. All right, so, so if we can take a minute, for everyone who's here, if we can just take a minute and sign the deed and then, and then Marion, I think you can probably do the notary while we go on our business.
I'm going to be observing you as you sign.
I have my notary with me. Do you want me to notarize?
I am a notary.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, she's going to do it.
Okay.
I can do the notary and, and I will then excuse myself and actually do the stamping and so forth.
That'd be great. And we can go on and go to our next agenda.
Thank you.
Great.
That's great. Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Just curious if, because Mr. Wells isn't here to sign, do we need?
I don't know. We'll figure it out. I think we'll figure it out.
I believe I'm all set. Thank you very much. I really appreciate you moving it up.
Thank you.
Good luck with the rest of the meeting.
All right, thank you.
Listening online.
All right. All right. Item five is a discussion update, teen activity. We've had at least one meeting, may have been some additional information in under the meeting about troubling teen activity that has occurred in the woods and we had presentation and discussion with Chief King and Ms. Carrolls and, and some others. And so many, many of the board members wanted to follow up. Ms. Musto in particular wanted to follow up with some additional information and opportunity to talk. Our hope was to have a separate meeting on this, but we haven't had a chance to do that yet. This doesn't, our discussion tonight doesn't mean we can't have a separate meeting on it, but we have, tonight with us, we have Casey Corcoran, who is a Community Outreach, Awareness and Prevention Education Senior Director at the Boston Area Rape Crisis Center. And then, so Mr. Corcoran, if you want to come up and, and present what you have to the board. We also have members of the town staff here today who are available to, to be involved in a discussion too, if there are questions. Chief King is here, John King, the Chief of Police, Carolyn Conseller, our Health Director, and Ann Solomon, who's our, I'm sorry, Ann Grossman, who is our town social worker is here as well. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Corcoran, and then we'll take it from there.
Great, thank you so much. You know, as you mentioned, my name is Casey Corcoran. I'm both a resident of Milton, a proud resident of Milton, and also the Senior Director of Prevention Outreach and Education at the Boston Area Rape Crisis Center. That's, that's a mouthful, right? We call it Bark, you may have heard it called Bark. It's one of the oldest, I think it's the second oldest in the country, rape crisis center. You know, I've been in the field of domestic violence and sexual violence prevention for twenty-three, almost twenty-four years now. It's been a long time. My hair wasn't as gray when I started. You know, I know the issue of sexual violence, particularly as it relates to the woods, has come up at recent select board meetings and I'm, I'm glad we're talking about it and I'm glad it's being discussed. I know individuals on the select board have taken disclosures of sexual violence themselves. It's all too common. And what we know about sexual violence, and I'm here as a resource, as an expert in the field and as a resource to my own community, what we know is that sexual violence is dramatically underreported. It's dramatically underreported among our teens in Milton. It's dramatically underreported among adults in our community and it's dramatically underreported nationally. And there are lots of, lots of really valid reasons for that. It's underreported because there's a stigma around talking about and addressing sexual violence. We have a culture, at times a cultural acceptance of sexual violence just being a norm. It's something that happens. And many survivors have very real experiences of not being believed when they do come forward. And that's information that trickles out to other survivors, right? It's information that gets passed around. But I know we're here specifically talking about and thinking about our teens here in Milton. And my work over the past twenty-two years has been, has largely been around adolescent development and working with teens. I also ran the Start Drawing Teen Dating Violence Prevention, Healthy Relationship Promotion Initiative for the City of Boston for some time. But what do we know about our teens? So we have the Youth Risk Behavior Survey that's done and from our two thousand and twenty-one data, we know that over four percent of our high school students reported being physically forced to have sex. That's over fifty-five students, fifty-five plus students within our high school. We know that six point three also report, experience sexual dating violence, right? So sexual violence can happen within a relationship, it can also happen outside of a relationship. But of course, this isn't the full story. I remember when the YRBS data came out for, for Milton a couple of years ago and I saw the increased binge drinking, particularly among our female identified students. My wife does work at Tough School of Medicine around substance use disorders and alcohol and whatnot and I said, knowing, doing the work that I do, I know that sexual violence often goes with alcohol use and misuse. In Milton, a third of sexually active males and almost twenty percent of females in Milton High School reported that they were using drugs or alcohol before sex. What we say in the field and what What we say in the field and what I often talk about is alcohol is the most commonly used date rape drug. Very common. And again, when I see these numbers, especially the binge drinking numbers, it points to a deeper issue. An issue that is not unique to Milton in any way, but an issue that needs to be addressed nonetheless. So, so how do we do that, getting to the hopeful, you know, part? And this is an issue that it occurs in the woods, but it occurs in other places as well. It'd be like, a bit like Whack-a-Mole, if we got, we took care of the woods, right? And students weren't meeting there and drinking, and there wasn't sexual assault there. It's not that it would disappear from our community, right? The way, we don't want to cut off the branches and leave the roots, right? It just grows back. So, so what can we do? One.
Recording in progress.
Like tonight, we have to break the taboo about talking about sexual violence openly and honestly. And we need to make it more than a one-time thing. This should be, hopefully, the beginning of a conversation, not the end of a conversation. But we have to get more comfortable talking about it, and it is uncomfortable. I talk to parents all the time about this, about sexual health, and I say, it's hard, it's uncomfortable, and you have to do it, right? You have to do it. And we're going to help with the skills, but you got to do it. We need to teach skills to young people and adults, frankly, around things like consent, bystander intervention, responding, how to respond to a disclosure of sexual violence. Because what we know from the data and from the research is that while most incidences of sexual violence across any age will never be reported to law enforcement, the vast majority will never be reported to law enforcement. Almost every incident of sexual violence will be told to a friend or family member. So we need to equip those friends and family members, those students, on how to be the first responders to this issue in our community. We need to make sure that community members, agencies, boards, et cetera, know what the resources are that are available. They're plentiful. We need to make sure folks know what they are and how to access them. There's a new Massachusetts Health and Physical Education standard, there are new, I'm working on this right now, I was working on this today. There's new, the governor proposed new Health and Physical Education standards. I worked on these a long time ago. I'm so happy that they have finally come up for a vote, and there's public comment. Public comment is open until August 28th on them. These are standards that are developmentally appropriate, inclusive, and evidence-based, all things that we need. And we have an opportunity to make sure that Milton measures up once these are passed or voted on. You know, that's my hope. We have an opportunity to look and say, how are we measuring up? There's the Healthy Youth Act that's going to come up for a vote, for a vote. It's going to further codify these standards. And we need training and opportunities for parents to talk. These, as I said, these conversations are hard, but we need to, we need to have them, and we need to practice. So we need to give parents lots of opportunities to have these conversations and to get the information, and in different ways. And we need a plan, right? This isn't a quick fix. This is an issue while the woods has bubbled up and people are talking about it, while I'm doing interviews with the news about spiked drinks. This is not a new issue. This is, this is the work I do every day. So we need a plan, and we need a long-term commitment. I'm big on education, I'm a former elementary school teacher. We need to start young, talking about this. We need a K-12 strategy, not just when something bubbles up. I often say, you know, we shouldn't be practicing the fire drill during the fire, right? We need to prepare, we need to prep, we need to provide good quality education. So I'm here to be a resource for the town, for my community, for my children who are in the schools, and for anybody who's committed to this issue of preventing sexual violence and helping those who have been affected by sexual violence heal. So I appreciate your time, and if you have any questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Corcoran. Comments or questions from the members? Mr. Zoll?
Thank you so much for asking that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I first want to lead with just a quick note that the youth task force is having a public meeting on the 28th about the woods, and this issue will likely come up. It's going to be at Cunningham Hall, and so if anybody who's listening to this is concerned, I would encourage them to come to that at 7:00 p.m. I mean, I don't even know how to begin on this, except I think that you've really hit the nail on the head in terms of the fact that we need to deal with this. It's a, it's a national issue, it's a local issue, it's an issue in people's homes, and they may not even know it's an issue in their homes. And I really applaud you for all of this work. I guess I have two questions, if I may. So you mentioned that alcohol is, is sort of, you could call it the number one date rape drug. And I think we hear from some parents that they feel like if they're providing alcohol to their kids and they're letting them go into the woods, that they're doing the responsible thing by making sure that they know where the kids are and where, you know, and that they're drinking the drinks that they've provided them. How do you, how would you respond to that if a parent told you that casually?
You know, this is why we need to do better education, right? We, channeling my wife. You know, we talk, the adolescent brain is not fully developed till about 24, 25 years old, and we know the impact that alcohol has. So we really shouldn't be encouraging any alcohol usage in our young people. It has deleterious effects on their health, on their brains, and on their behaviors as well. And I think, I mean, we, we just need to have open and honest conversations with the parents. Because what I find is that I do work around sexual violence, around healthy relationships, and I get the questions from young people often that they don't feel like they can ask their parents, and they have a lot of questions. So the parent may think that it's totally normative for their teen to go to the woods and drink. And they may think that that's what their teen wants to do. That may not be what their teen wants to do. They may be really uncomfortable, and they may be getting messages from other young people and some adults in Milton that that's just what teens are supposed to do, right? So the more we can have open and honest conversations about this, and about what their concerns are, what their hopes are, what's going on for them, we're going, we're going to, it's just going to be better, right? We're going to have better communication with our own kids and as a community. But it's not, we can't just assume that it's normative, that that's what every teen wants to do, and that's what every teen's comfortable with.
Thank you. And I would just, if I may, with my second question, Mr. Chair. I'd like to hear a little bit from you about, about these new standards that are being put into place. If you have recommendations, and I'm sure, and making sure that you're talking to the school board also about these recommendations.
Yeah, so, and you can go online to the Massachusetts Department of Ed website. They have it front and center on the main page. They're going to be voted on. And they, as I said, they're, they're nothing revolutionary, but they do meet the moment. They bring us up to the, to the current century, right? Because they are based in science. They are inclusive, they're inclusive of our LGBTQ plus young people, right? In the way that many of our, our health curricula are not. And they are developmentally appropriate and take a K-12 comprehensive approach. So I would encourage anybody to go on, it's, it's actually a very long feedback form, so you do need to give yourself some time. But it asks you to go through each of the sort of guiding principles in key standards and to give your feedback on it. BARK also, where I work, Boston Area Rape Crisis Center, we also have a summary of it on our webpage, and we, we have a letter that if community members want to sign on to, as opposed to filling out the rather long form, they, they're free to do that. But we feel this is a step in the right direction. It's, it's not the end, it's baseline, right? It's not where we want to end, but it gets us closer to where we want to be.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much for being here this evening. Your words are something that I am very happy to hear, and not in a good way. I'm happy to hear that there is actually data out there, and I'm happy to hear that, that there's somebody in our community that really is willing to talk about it, talk about it openly. It's a really hard subject. Sex is a really hard subject, makes a lot of people uncomfortable. And, you know, unfortunately, without it, none of us would be here. So, so I, I think that there's got to be a way that we can find a fine line to talk about it in a respectful way, and also educating ourselves to where, where our students are at now. You know, when I was growing up, we would go home from school and there was no social media. You would go to your, see your friends at McDonald's or wherever, but there was no constant communication. Now our students are in constant communication, they're constantly being told and targeted. And, and so I'm really happy to hear that, that there's a way to communicate in our current times. One of the things I'm curious about is, I've, I've raised a daughter, she's 20, so I think I'm close to being done, maybe. And my son is 14, and we spend a lot of time talking about his responsibility in situations, and his responsibility to be aware of other women, other boys, other people, if they are being harassed or being sexually exploited, to literally put his body between them and the person. We are teaching him to be, hopefully, a young gentleman that's willing to stand up and, and take those hard things. I'm wondering if there are programs that is something that we can possibly work with, with Dr. Burrows and the school committee to bring into our high schools about not just, you know, we spend a lot of time focusing on women and what women wear, and how women act, and how women present themselves. And, you know, I'm kind of at the point where it's, it's got to come down to men also standing up against men and saying that, that this is not okay. So I'm wondering if there's any program specifically designed for adolescent boys that might be something that we could bring into our schools to, to really talk about this, and talk about how they can, they can be allies to those victims that are, that are, you know, are soon to be victims, or I don't know how to write the word to say there. But a way so that we can really start to take this head on. Because I think, you know, the woods is one thing, it's been happening for decades, I've, I've heard. And, and I think it's time that we really do face the fact that, that our young folks are being put into positions that they don't want to be in. And it is so traumatizing that some young girls are still dealing with the trauma that happened six years ago. So I would be interested to hearing about that, that's my first question. My second question is, is there, would you be willing, or is there somebody who would be willing to also work with our youth task force to kind of see if we can, can do this more as a community, almost like a grassroots type thing, where we could have community programs or something like that? So we don't just put one more thing on the schools. I don't want to put one more thing on the schools. I think it's, it's a community effort that we have to start doing. So I'm wondering if there's somebody that we could, could work with, Ben can work with.
Yeah, I mean, I personally, there certainly are, and I personally would be happy to help out.
Thank you.
Always.
Thank you.
And we do, we do have, there is, there are programs for, for young men. And I've actually led a couple of initiatives around engaging men and boys around this issues.
Okay.
But I also want to acknowledge that men and boys experience sexual violence as well, and often don't feel comfortable coming forward to report it. So we have a lot of work to do on making sure folks feel safe coming forward to report when they have experienced violence. So one of the programs, for example, I used to work in an organization, a national organization called Futures of Violence, and we have an, we had, see, I don't work there anymore.
You don't?
Had, and they have an evidence-based program called Coaching Boys into Men.
Thank you.
Which is designed, is designed for coaches to deliver, short lessons to deliver to, to their student athletes. There, there are other programs, there's MVP, Mentors in Violence Prevention, that has a high school curriculum. So there's a number, a lot of them do focus on athletics.
Thank you. Thank you for that, I appreciate it.
But I have, I have a number of them at my house that people can come see and look at. There's some really great programs out there.
Okay.
That do, do address, I think, yes, we need to talk about gender, we need to talk about all these things. We'll add to the list of important conversations we have to have with our young people and our adults in our community.
Other comments or questions? Ms. Musto?
Thank you. First, I wanted to thank you, Casey, for coming today and providing some insight. I'm, I frankly, I'm a little disappointed that it took this long for us to get something going. I know that I had sent a note, I would, thought we should have had a, a meeting with a lot of different entities around, you know? We have a health department, the schools, yourself, a bunch of people together for a dedicated meeting. Because I'm a healthcare provider myself, a nurse practitioner, and I know about the mandated reporting and so forth like that. And it's a serious issue if this is happening in, in the community, and I think it needs, you know, the attention it deserves. And so although you're coming here today, I think that's great, and it's a meeting, but we have so many things on our agenda. I felt strongly, and Mike knows this, that we should have had a separate meeting just dedicated to that and bring in, you know, maybe the superintendent and so forth, because it is a serious issue. And, you know, I think bringing in a bunch of people to discuss that would have been really good to have. And obviously, this has come up a few times at our board, and I don't think it gets, it's getting the proper attention. I mean, it's great that you came, and I appreciate what you said, but I think it deserves its own, you know, its own meeting for that, because it is such a serious issue with people. And anyone in healthcare will tell you that. I mean, obviously, parents, you know, as well, see it in their children hear stories and, and, you know, recite things. But as a provider, I can tell you that all ages, I've seen things, so, yeah. So I appreciate it, thank you.
Oh, Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for coming in. You brought me back to the first time I ever heard as a policeman, the word, the term BARK and the Boston Area Rape Crisis, Rape Crisis Center, and how much good work they do. My wife also, who for many has committed to domestic violence and sexual assault units, as well as the high-risk assessment teams in Cambridge PD, often speaks how important, and the one word that you talked about is just communication. You know that we live in a world where alcohol is the liquor choice, and we're entering football season, and one of the primary advertisers for the NFL, many of them are, you know, liquor distributors. And it's very important for kids and parents to have these discussions. I have a teenage daughter myself, and my wife is far more aggressive with this than I am. I know Chief King's in the room, and I do want to give it a shout out, though there are a lot of positive things that do go on. We have some great SROs, we have some great investigators, some great school staff, DA's round tables, which are very proactive, which take place, which look at these issues. Alcohol, domestic violence, sexual assault, and much of what you said could also been applicable to the previous speaker, President, the new president of Curry College, because these are issues, particularly in date rape and in sexual assault, extend beyond the high school years into the college years. And I just want to thank you for that. You, it's, these are issues that are really important and critical in society today, and very often are not spoken on. But I also wanted to give a shout out to a lot of the good work that does take place in this town, and a lot of the partnerships that do take place every day. So thank you again, and thank you for coming to give us your time tonight to speak to this important issue.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Certainly, so, you know, we pulled this together quickly, because within the last two weeks, because we thought it was important to get the issue out there sooner rather than later. Surely doesn't preclude us from having, and I think it's, it makes good sense for us to have a broader meeting with more constituent parties, and we'll certainly, you know, we'll certainly do that. But having been able to put this together in two weeks and have you be able to come within two weeks is certainly, I think, beneficial to get that conversation going, and we'll continue that, and hopefully have the kind of meeting, perhaps a dedicated meeting as we come into the fall, when there's, when perhaps there's more people around, and not, not as many people who are on vacation. So perhaps we'll get even more involvement if we do that sometime in September. Perhaps the youth task force can take the lead on having a dedicated meeting. on having a dedicated meeting of all the constituent parties that Ms. Musto mentioned. So we're keeping our, keeping the pedal to the metal on this. Keeping this, of keeping this at the top of the agenda, certainly having this in our meetings, and we look forward to continuing it. So thank you, sir. Thank you for that.
And I appreciate you having me in. And the one thing I'll leave you with that I always think about, I've been in this work a long time, as a starting point for all of us, is we know this is so under-reported, right? We have decades and decades of data. Why? Why is under-reported? Why don't our young people in Milton or in other communities not feel comfortable coming forward? We have to answer that. We can put all the programming in place. We can put the education, hang the posters on the wall, right? Have the cards in the counselor's office. But if we're not actually digging down and trying to find out why they don't feel comfortable coming forward and trying to address that, we're going to have limited success. So thank you for having me. I look forward to working with you all on this in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, item six. Discussion update approval, multifamily zoning requirements of the MBTA Communities Act. So for many months, for most of this year, this community has been discussing the MBTA Communities Act, whether it be in public presentations from our planning department, our planning board. This board has had several presentations from the planning department on that. And so this board now has the opportunity to discuss this and say what it thinks, if it desires to. And so we have included this on the agenda. We've included three specific items. One is compliance. Second is districts and density. And the third is any requests we may want to make for advisory opinions on eligible locations. So first, with respect to compliance, there have been, there has been some discussion about compliance with the MBTA Communities Act and whether it's a good idea, whether it's not a good idea. So it is an opportunity for this board to have that discussion about compliance. And I don't know if Mr. Milano or Mr. Zawinski want to add anything prior to our discussion on item six A, which is compliance.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Nothing other than, you know, as Tim has stated numerous times, is he is working towards complying with the law, with the guidelines that were stipulated by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. That is the direction that we have provided to him to date, and we will continue to do so unless we hear otherwise. But I think that's our marching orders as we understand them, and we will continue to move that forward as long as that's the case.
Comments or questions? Mr. Zol.
Just a couple of quick comments about this. I think when we took the oath of office to be select board members, you know, we said that we would follow the laws and the constitution of the Commonwealth. So I think this should be a pretty uncontroversial vote. Voting to comply with state law seems pretty straightforward to me. But I do want to highlight, actually, it's something that I've said before, and Mr. Parent earlier in Citizen Speak said the same thing, which is that if we don't comply, we're essentially ceding control of this town to outside parties who won't have the best interest. And we see that now with the 40B developments that are happening. They are the result of a failure to comply with state law. So the question is not really, will we zone this or will we not zone this? The question is, will we zone this or will it be zoned for us by outside developers that don't have the best interest of the community at heart? So I will be voting to comply with the MBTA Communities zoning requirement.
Other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Bradley.
Mr. Chair, are you looking for a motion and a vote on the compliance?
For member, oh, Ms. Musto.
I have a few things I wanted to mention. So a couple of things I'd like to say about it are, first of all, we have a planning board, and a planning board has been working on this with our town planner, working on different models, different options. And even by their own admission, with the survey, you have about 280 people that have responded. We have a town of 28,000 people. I know firsthand, when I go places and if I'm at a store or something and I mention, hey, have you heard about this? Nobody has any idea. So it's a select group of people that know about this and are following this issue, but it's not been in the paper. I haven't really seen it in the paper that most people get, which is the local paper. Much to say about it. And I think it's a problem when the community doesn't know that much about something and we're ready to vote on something. The other issue is, we have a planning board that has been working on this. There are different things with this law. Number one, there is the law and there are guidelines. In fact, these guidelines have just recently changed yet again. We recently got some information, for instance, from the town of Brookline. Brookline is a very interesting community because they've been working on this. And if you look at their own memo, they're going with what they think is reasonable for their community. They're not going with 7,000 units, which is what they're being dictated to do. They're going with something that is reasonable. We don't know, they're still working on this, the planning board. And I think that for us to sort of pull rank on the planning board, I don't think is right. And to Mr. Zol's point that we're elected to obey the laws, yes, we are. But there's law and there's guidelines. Guidelines have already changed twice. This is the second change on those guidelines. I think eventually, this will probably be sorted out in a court of law at some point because of the guidelines changing the way that they've been changing. I think we want to make sure we get it right. Nobody's saying we shouldn't comply, but there is a real case to be made for what is right for our community in terms of what's fair and equitable when you're talking about a trolley line and getting classified as rapid transit. I think this is an opportunity for us to do the right thing. I think we should be working collaboratively with another department. I know that, like, the planning department with Mr. Zawinski have been doing a lot of work on this issue. And I think it's really important that we sort of stay in our lane with this. Let's find out more information before we start voting on things with certain districts and so forth. And I think that that's important for us to do. We need to listen to all of the residents. We represent all of the residents. And if we're only hearing from 280 people on a survey, what percentage of that is of the community? We have 28,000 people. That's all we're hearing from. Many people don't even know about this act. Thank you.
And just as a factual matter, just as a factual matter, I think on the Brookline issue, I think Mr. Milano has been in touch with the people in Brookline because we've been trying to get information from all departments. And I think the reality is somewhat different in terms of their zoning for, rather, what is reasonable versus 7,000 units. I think they actually are zoning for 6,900 units. But Mr. Milano, you may be able to, just as a factual matter, tell us what the reality is.
Sure. Yes, Brookline has what they call the M Districts Plus zoning proposal, which takes all the multifamily housing that is already built and existing in Brookline. And that is not there as of right. So they're changing the zoning where all that multifamily housing is presently to make it as of right to reach compliance. And they term this paper compliance because they're complying with the law. They're not necessarily expecting any net new housing units under that model because it's already built out. And that's a strategy that the town of Milton is also taking advantage of in certain locations where there is existing housing already built that does count as part of what is reachable under that zone capacity. The second piece of what Brookline is doing is the Harvard Street Form-Based Zoning Code, which will result in net new housing units. So when you see news articles that refers to 800 new housing units, that is the number they expect to be produced out of the Harvard Street proposal. But it is not inclusive of everything they're doing on multifamily zoning, primarily the zoning under their existing multifamily housing to take advantage. And that's something a lot of communities are doing. Dedham did it. Dedham's approved multifamily zoning is essentially an overlay over legacy place, over a couple of 40Bs and a hotel and an MBTA lot because they're taking advantage of what's already built up, just as Milton is doing. They just have more growth than Milton does, so they have more to take advantage of to allow, to have compliance zoning without necessarily resulting in 7,000 new housing units being built. I hope that explains it kind of nuts and bolts very briefly, but that's their approach.
Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Milano said it. I looked closely at both the Dedham's data and Brookline. We are different from both of them. They both have, Dedham especially, and same with Westwood Union Station, they have more than we do. Today, I walked from the Canton Line to the Randolph Line along 128. And all of that, which in Westwood, Dedham, No, it is all commercial, is the Moos' Reservation. It's all protected green space. I think if anyone were to say, all right, let's use part of this and develop, they'd be well off three. And we know that wouldn't happen. But the Moos' Reservation is one of the special things that takes up sizable mass of our community. To Mr. Zol's point, I'm all right with the law. It's not the law that I have the issue. And I've taken more roasts than I can count in my life. It's the guidelines. The guidelines are the issue. And we're talking about, we're all getting the same emails. Yes, our real estate, someone who's in real estate, someone who's a developer, someone who's a housing, is going to be pro this. I get that. I would be too. This is the infrastructure of our community, and none of us can sit here and say that a proposal of 27 or 2,000 more units in this town anywhere, regardless where we put it, is not going to alter dramatically the face of the town that we live in today. And we have an obligation to protect this as best we can. The compliance, the guidelines changing and being so fluctuating really concerns me. And the other thing is the MBTA guidelines, they weren't even developed by the MBTA. They were developed by someone else. So the one thing I'll ask for you tonight, Mr. Chair, I'd really be more comfortable, this is not my expertise. I get traffic and all that, I get all that. That I worry about? I worry about that today, never mind 700 more units, never mind 20,000 or more units. I'd really appreciate if we could schedule a joint meeting with the planning board where we can hear from them, their thoughts on this. They are the subject matter. This is their lane, not our lane. And I'd really be far more comfortable waiting to vote until I heard, until we had a joint meeting with them. Thank you. That's all I got to say on this tonight.
Other comments or questions?
Go first.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to address a few things. I do get our local town newspaper. I'm a subscriber to it. I believe in local journalism, keeping it strong. As a former journalist, everybody should join and subscribe to the Milton Times. I know for a fact that in the last, at least two editions, there have been major articles on the MBTA Communities. So even if you're running into the liquor store, you're running into 7-Eleven, and you look down and you see that Milton Times, the headline two weeks ago was about MBTA Communities. So I know that that is getting out there, for starters. Second of all, I just, I know that, I think you said 280 people have replied.
That's what it seemed to say on the website.
So it's interesting because I often look to how our citizens in town are engaged by our voting percentages. And our voting percentages in town are abysmal. They're, you know, you and I were very lucky. We had 31% of the town come out and vote that year. So considering that even 100%, even 50% of our town can't come out and vote on who they want to have represent them, that is telling. So for me, I'm at a point where I hear what everybody is saying, but I would like to know that we, as a select board, actually want to comply with the MBTA Communities Act. And therefore, Mr. Chair, I am making a motion that the select board is requesting that we will comply with the, that the town of Milton will comply with the MBTA Communities Act.
Second.
Thank you.
Missions been made. And second, any further discussion with Mr. Zol?
Yeah, I did have one, just one quick point, because I think this often gets lost in the numbers. When we talk about the number of new units, we have to remember that we're talking about the number of zoned units, and we're talking about laying units on top of existing housing. So if you have a single-family house and you zone it so that it could be a three-family house, you have a net gain of two units, you still have that family. So I think we've, you know, if we zone the 88 wharf or, you know, another building like that that has multiple families in it as slightly bigger, we're talking about a net gain of very minimal units. And that's where this confusion about Brookline has come about because Brookline has actually built out multifamily housing. So, you know, the idea that there's going to be, it's just not the case that there's going to be 2,400 new units. Tim Zawinski has told us that multiple times. We haven't even filled our housing quota from the zoning that happened in the 1930s. So the idea that overnight, we're going to flip a switch and there's going to be 2,400 new families here, it's just not correct. So I just want to make sure that that's on the record before we go to the vote. Thank you.
Ms. Musto.
Yes, a couple of things I'd like to say. The thing is that we don't have to make this vote today. Okay? And again, there is compliance with law and there are guidelines. I think everybody's lumping everything together. There's law and there's guidelines. Guidelines have already changed twice. They might change next month. They might change next week. We don't know. I think that's a real concern. We've spent a little bit of time learning about the Act, but the planning board has been tasked with that. I think it's premature for us to take a vote without doing a joint meeting and learning more about it and discussing all the possibilities. And I think it's very premature and it's overreached, frankly, at this point today to take a vote like that. And as far as people knowing about it, Ms. Bradley's right with the voter turnout. I mean, it is poor, and we could say that. But I will tell you that there are so many people that don't know about this. And the paper has reported, to your point, they have reported it a little bit, but it is something that the Globe has had in there constantly. Constantly, it's in the Globe. People don't always, it's the summer. Let's be honest, it's the summer. Are people really paying attention? Not so much. So I think it's a little premature for us to do that, to take a vote at this point. I think that we should be working with our planning board. You know, we've already sort of, by sending that letter in when we had worked, you had worked with the planning board chair, Mr. Zulis, on a letter, and then we altered the letter, you know, that wasn't really good faith either. So I feel that we really need to show good faith for our town in working with another board, especially a board that that's their job to do zoning.
Mr. Zol. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, so it was certainly good faith. We all know the process that went on. There was no bad faith. It was all acting in good faith. There's no issue there. That's not, that's not really, that's not, there's no, there's no basis for that at all. Let me say this. The requirement for compliance with the MBTA Communities Act is December 31st. We have a town meeting on December 4th. We have a responsibility to the residents of this town to move on this. We have a responsibility to tell the residents of this town what we think. We have a responsibility to lead and to help the residents through this process. And we can't wait until the very end to do that because otherwise, no one's going to know what's going on. There needs to be, we need to, we need to, we need to let the residents know what this board thinks on this and what this board intends to do on this and whether this board intends to comply with this law by December 31st. And if we don't do that, if we don't do it soon, and if we don't do it, I dare say, tonight, then we won't be able to do it. So there is a deadline. You know, we can't be in a situation in December or in September or in October where we say, well, we can't take the test because we didn't do our homework. We need to do our homework now if we're going to comply with the MBTA Communities Act. Now, let me say a word about compliance. I grew up in a household with someone who was in law enforcement for, you know, 30 years, state police trooper, Brockton police officer, 30 years, state police trooper, Brockton Police Officer, State Police Detective Captain. Compliance with the law in my household and the way I was brought up was not an option. An option didn't exist for complying with the law. It seems to me, we try to teach our children to comply with the law, and if we as a community are going to lead, and we're going to set a good example and good models for our children, then we will take actions to comply with the law, and we will say that we're going to comply with the law. And so, so I think it's important for us to get moving on this. We need an article, we need an article that gets vetted by the warrant committee and by the planning board, and reviewed by town meeting members. We need that, and so we need to do it now, if we're going to comply with this, and as I said, in the way that I was brought up and the way that, you know, we try to bring our children is to comply with the law. And so, and finally, the third point that I'll say is just somewhat similar to what Mr. Zoll said, without repeating this, and that is, we've seen this movie before. For 30 years, this community did not comply with affordable housing requirements, and the result of that was, the developers decided how we would comply. The developers put 940Bs on our back, and they decided, and that's the same thing that will happen here. Now, whether the town loses some funding here or there, or the Attorney General says you need to comply, that's one thing. The second thing is, this is going to happen, and either we can have a plan for it, and we can decide what the plan is for it, or after December 31st, the developers are going to decide for us, and they're going to do it. I would rather our town act and lead and decide, and so that's why I think it's important for this board to take a position on this, to lead on this, and to make sure that we have an article in plenty of time for town meeting. Now, maybe the planning board will have an article, they don't yet, maybe they'll have an article on Thursday night, but we need an article, and we need it soon, if we're going to be able to do what the residents want us to do, and that is, to bring this issue to a head in December, so town meeting can decide. So, that's what I have. Ms. Musto.
When we met several weeks ago, we were looking to see what was right and just for us in terms of what we, that classification. You're talking about complying with a, with an art, complying with the law is one thing, and the guidelines are another thing. So, when you're saying compliance, it, what is, what does it say for compliance? It says a reasonable, like reasonable-sized district that allows for multifamily housing, correct?
So, what is correct is, this idea that you can decide how to comply with the law is not correct, right? Because, so this idea that there is somehow a difference between the law and the guidelines, and we can kind of somehow come up with our own guidelines, that doesn't exist. I don't understand the argument, I don't understand the rationale, but I know it doesn't exist. We can't come up with our own guidelines under the law. The law gives the, the Department of Housing and Living Communities the responsibility to come up with the guidelines to comply with the law. The law doesn't say the community can decide the guidelines, and the community can decide how it's going to comply with the law. That is delegated to the Department of Housing and Livable Communities. That's how you comply with the law. So, this idea that somehow, well, we can comply with the law, but we're not going to comply with the guidelines, that doesn't exist. So, I have Mr. Wells, but.
Go ahead.
Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, first, let me begin by saying to you, following up on your law enforcement comments, that having spent four decades now on public safety, I'm not one who does not comply with the law. And again, I reiterate, it's not the law that I'm concerned about. The law is very vague, the law, the law actually is reasonable. The guidelines are, they're almost punitive, and I can't believe that you don't see, I mean, one of the things we have to do is listen to people. Look at how many people have concerns about this, and this is, it's true, it's August 22nd. A good part of the town is way out, and they're not even here yet, until school is started next week. I don't know why the rush. I reiterate my request, I'm not comfortable voting for this, and I'm not one to be voting not compliance with the law, I'm a person who's followed the law for their entire professional career, the guidelines concern me, and this day-to-day shifting of the guidelines, what's going to happen tomorrow? That's my concern. We don't have, we're not Dedham, we're not Brookline, we're not Westwood, we don't have the space. We can't even find, look what we just went through to try and get a piece of land and build a school. Where are you going to build the next school? The park department's been looking for a parcel to get a new park for 14 years, and they can't find one. So, look at, Ms. Bradley, look at Kelly, look at Andrews, look at Shields, look at how packed these parks are all the time. There was no more room for any other parks, so that's my concern. My concern is that, is that the strangulation here comes from the guidelines, not the law. And I reiterate my request, will we please postpone this till we can have a joint meeting and listen to those who live in the lane of the planning board and hear what they have to say? I get it, Tim Zerwinski is a proponent of this, I agree, but I'm concerned about the ramifications of just voting compliance here.
Mr. Zoll.
Thank you.
Mr. Zoll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, I just like to say that the reason that we're doing this now is because the planning department, the planning board has failed to come up with anything. If you've watched the meetings of the planning board, at the last meeting, one of the planning board members said, we've been talking about redistricting since April, right? So, what else have they been doing since April? Complaining that this is a, now being foisted upon the town at the last minute, I think is not coherent with the reality, that this has been law for some time, the planning board has known about it for some time, they have, we have had folks in town working on this, and, you know, I think anybody can sort of guess that there's either an effort to wait out the clock and just say, oh, gosh, we didn't get that in in time, professor, can we please have another three months on this assignment? That's not how the law works, this is not college, this is not homework, this is actual law that's been passed by this Commonwealth, we need to follow it. I said at the beginning that this is a very straightforward vote. As members of the select board, we took an oath to uphold the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, that's what I'm going to be doing, that's, that's all I have to say about this. I think we should move forward to a vote, because I don't think that we're going to change anybody's mind, but we can stay here for longer if we want to.
Ms. Musto.
Thank you. I just want to point out a few things. First of all, we shouldn't be bashing another board in this town. We are all together on these issues, and we're working for the betterment of the community. So, for us to be putting down another board is terrible, it's a terrible precedent to do. I wouldn't want them to do that to us, and I don't think we should be doing that to them. So, I totally disagree with that. Again, I think there's a discrepancy in what people think law is and what guidelines are, and these guidelines just change yet again. We don't know if they'll change a third time, a fourth time before December. They could change 10 more times between now and December, we don't know. I don't think there's anyone here that is not saying that we shouldn't comply with the law, but the law is one thing, and guidelines are something else, and I think what's happening here is, we're putting it all together and saying it's all in one, and we need to do this right now, and we can't have an opportunity to talk with the planning department that's been doing, working on this anymore, or the planning board. This is a very complicated thing, these guidelines, if you want to look at the guidelines and say that's, that's how you want to go, that in itself is very complicated, and it's already changed once, maybe it'll change again. Again, there's law and there's guidelines. Nobody's saying we shouldn't do what's reasonable, but for us to sit here on August 22nd, in the middle of the summer, and say, we have to get this tonight, we have to do this right now, I think is wrong. I think it's not right for the community that you're not working with your planning board, number one, and number two, many people still don't know about this. Look at the forums, I've been to several of those forums, it's the same people recycled with maybe two or three new people at these forums. So, to sit here and say, we're doing what's best for the community, I don't think we can, we can say that, and I don't think it's the right message we want to give the community. We want to do what's best for the community and best for the residents, and we have a planning board, and we have an opportunity to meet with them, and we don't have to do this tonight on August 22nd. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion to comply with the MBTA Communities Multifamily zoning requirement that has been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
It's a roll call.
Yes, roll call. All those in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
No.
Mr. Wells?
Nope.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
And Mr. Zulus, yes. All right. Item 6B is the discussion approval districts and density. I think we have Mr. Milano and Mr. Zerwinski.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll promote Mr. Zerwinski, and if, just to indulge me a brief detour back to Kitter, we had a date error on the signature sheet, so I'm going to send this back around, let's try round two. Thank you, Attorney McPatrick, for noticing it and bringing it back with the correction, sorry about that. Tim is joining now, so Tim has a presentation to talk through some of the latest mockups of potential compliant districts and their density figures that he'll talk through. He is also, will be at the planning board on Thursday alongside Uteal, who is the consultant that's been assisting the planning board and the planning department on these efforts. I had distributed a memo to the select board that was shared broadly to, just I try to help guide this conversation, to generate some feedback, both for the planning department and for the planning board, as we work towards reaching agreement on these districts and these density numbers. And I know there's some public comment about those districts as well, so I'll turn it over to Tim now, and let him take it from there.
Are we good?
Thanks, Nick, and thank everyone for having me. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, Tim, we can hear you well.
So, thanks again for the opportunity. Tim Zerwinski, Director of Planning and Community Development. We have been working with Uteal, which is a planning and design firm, through a grant with, from the Massachusetts Housing Partnership, to help us evaluate potential compliant districts and sub-districts for MBTA community zoning. If you've been to any of our public forums, if you've been to the planning board meeting where we've discussed this, you know that we've gone through several iterations of different sub-districts of varying sizes and varying kind of dimensional parameters in those districts. We've gotten a lot of feedback from the planning board, we've gotten a lot of feedback from the public, our public forums, and what we asked Uteal to do is basically put together the two kind of best options for compliance based on some of the restrictions that are in the guidelines, restrictions that are in the law, restrictions that the town itself has kind of put on itself, which we'll talk about in a minute, and kind of, you know, come up with two sets or three sets, although we did get two sets, of sub-districts that present a choice, basically, of how to move forward with compliance. So, I'm going to share my screen real quick, if I'm allowed to do that. Can you all see my screen?
It says that you're, yes, well, now we can.
Okay, great. I wish I could do this full screen, but I don't know how to figure it out, so just forgive me on that one. So, these are some slides that Uteal put together for us, they're going to spruce these up a little bit more for their meeting with the planning board on Thursday, but I'm going to kind of blow through a couple of these introductory slides. But again, just by way of background, multifamily means three or more units, as-of-right means no special permit, no variance, you can just get your building permit, can't require ground floor commercial, can't require age restrictions, restrictions on bedrooms, number of occupants, this is the law, this is what we've been talking about for many months, and what's kind of been the foundational kind of guidance that we have about the law. This is going to be relevant for the, for the planning board, although it's important for you all to know as well, that site plan approval is still in play for any project under the MBTA community zoning. Site plan review, if you pay attention to 440 Granite Ave, if you paid attention to Avara back in the day, it's a mechanism by which the planning board can review larger or more sort of unusual projects that are sort of beyond the bread and butter kind of single-family house stuff that goes through the building department. So, this is something that's really important, that even though we're talking about as-of-right zoning, there still is a role for the planning board to put conditions on these projects to help mitigate some physical impacts on abutic properties. Again, our obligations under the state law, we're all familiar with the three grant programs that are laid out in the law, we're all hopefully familiar with the Attorney General's advisory from back in March, where Attorney General Campbell's office, you know, basically said compliance is not an option, you know, we will, you know, be seriously looking at non-compliant towns relative to civil enforcement actions under state and federal housing law. And then, the recent change to the guidelines that just came out last week, in addition to some appropriations changes to the requirements around mixed-use requirements, there were also a new set of discretionary grant programs that the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities said, you know, we will also take compliance into account when we make discretionary opinions on these grants. And just one thing to understand that, you know, these discretionary grant programs that are issued by the state, you know, it's up to those individual departments that determine how they rank applications, you know, for these things, and so even though these aren't necessarily laid out in the law, any state agency can say, we're going to take MBTA communities compliance into account when we, when we issue these grants. And the 13 are on the right in this box, a lot of these are not really kind of targeted towards towns like Milton, although I will say that the local acquisitions for natural diversity or the land grants, we have gotten land grants in the past, and actually, one of the, you know, one of the driving forces behind our update of our open space recreation plan is eligibility for these land grants, you know, to be able to get state money to, you know, purchase land for conservation and recreation purposes. You can't do that unless you have an updated open space plan, and now you can't do it unless you have MBTA communities zoning. And then the municipal vulnerability preparedness grant is a big one. We've got at least 70,000 bucks in MVP grants in the past three years, at least in my experience, being the Director of Planning, a lot of those are through the engineering department or partnerships between the planning department, the engineering department, and the Posit River Waterside Association. This is a program that is really one of our primary sources of funding for planning, not just planning, but, you know, eventually, if we want to start implementing projects to deal with sea level rise, flooding, stormwater management, all of the sort of deleterious effects of climate change, the MVP program is a huge part of that. So, that's something, you know, we'll be talking with Chase Berkeley, the Director of Public Works, to kind of figure out exactly how MVP grant funding fits into his planning, but I anticipate that'll be a big one. So, again, at least 50 acres is the size of our district, at least 15 units per acre, sub-districts can be different densities, we're all familiar with these. These are, again, a rundown of our criteria, you know, 2461, that's the multi-depth unit capacity, that is a function of our existing round housing stock, and also a function of the fact that Milton is considered to be a rapid transit community, rapid transit is considered to be the highest level of service by the state.
Tim, Tim, Tim?
Yep.
Just, you're fading a little bit, if you could, if you could just keep, make sure you keep your mouth.
Yep, 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 yep. I'll keep talking, and in the meantime, I will try to put my camera on, and that'll, that'll, that'll be helpful.
You just faded a little bit.
So, this is, this is a map that shows the areas that we are currently looking at as it relates to this sub-district. It's the map of the whole town, and you see all of the various half file, RDI around all of the, over here. It's a little bit tough to see, I think that's important because the sub-districts are actually relatively small, given the size of town, which is a small thing, but I think is really important to note that, you know, we're really in some really targeted areas here, and I'll go through the list as I go through these slides, but we've got the Granite Avenue Subdistrict. But we've got the Granite Avenue sub-district, which includes two Granite Ave, the office building, the State DPW yard, and the American Legion Hall on Granite Ave. We've got what we're calling the Milton Station sub-district, which includes a number of the larger parcels, which include, you know, existing multifamily housing in the Milton Village and Central Ave areas. We've got what we're calling the Matapan Station sub-district, which is predominantly unquity house, but also includes some of the other, you know, single-family parcels around it, really just to sort of get it up to the five-acre minimum of sub-district. We're really looking at unquity houses as a parcel is really the primary development opportunity here. This is the new, what we're calling the Transit Area Triplex District. We've been dealing with how much of and what the parameters around, you know, what we've called the Transit Area are going to be. In previous iterations of our thinking, we've had various larger and smaller Transit Area sub-districts. This one is really pared down to a really the minimum level of zoning district that we need to have in the Transit Area to achieve some of the requirements of the law and of the guidelines. And so what this Transit Area Triplex District does for us, and it's called Triplex because we're considering three units on a lot as a sort of maximum number of units for any of these lots that are highlighted. What this Transit Area Triplex District does is, one of the requirements is that half of your unit capacity needs to be in the Transit Area. So we have a requirement of 2,461 units. Half of those need to be within a half a mile of transit. So this, combined with the Milton Station District and part of the Granite Ave District, get us to that number. Another requirement is that half of your zoning district needs to be in one contiguous chunk. And so again, this, combined with the Matapan Station sub-district and combined with the Milton Village sub-district, gets us to that 50% sort of contiguous geography. And what we'll see in a little bit is that zoning for this area in particular gets us a lot closer to hitting our unit capacity number without going dramatically over it, which previous iterations of our Transit Area, you know, may have encompassed more parcels and may have given us a little bit more flexibility in terms of dimensional restrictions. But it also cranked up our unit capacity number way beyond what I think would be reasonable. So we'll see that when we look at some of these charts later on. We're talking about East Milton Square. The highlighted portion here represents largely the business district plus the Fruit Center and the Rockland Trust Bank Building, which you may or may not be aware are actually not in the business district. Those are in residential districts. The planning board is in the middle of a rezoning process for East Milton Square, similar to our process that we did in Milton Village a few years ago. The thinking here is that because we're talking about rezoning East Milton for multifamily development anyway, regardless of whether MBTA communities came around or not, that we should consider using this as a sub-district so that we can get credit for work that we're already doing. The sort of the caveat to all that becomes, we want to make sure that we're setting density levels and height levels in East Milton Square at a level that will make our special permit zoning that we're working on more attractive than the MBTA communities option, you know, if we choose to go in that direction. And so that'll become a consideration later on. At the request of the planning board, we asked UTL to look at this Randolph Ave sub-district. This is a new one. We haven't really looked at this one before, but it encompasses the approved 40B project at 728 Randolph Ave. And then it also encompasses the horse farm property behind those Randolph Ave houses had previously been zoned for assisted living residential development. So this is an area that, you know, there's a big difference between assisted living and just market rate housing. But this has been, you know, in the past rezoned by town meeting for a more intensive use. And so the planning board asked us to take a look at it, see if it would do something for our overall numbers and allow us to maybe, you know, dial back some of the other sub-districts. And so we had UTL take a look at that. And then finally, the, what we're calling the Randolph Ave South sub-district. This is the A. Thomason Sons landscaping property plus the Animal Rescue League property behind it. You know, I've talked about this, you know, in previous public forums. One of the principles that's guiding our choices around which sub-districts we want to look at or not look at is large parcels, existing multifamily, existing commercial, existing, you know, non-residential properties. Because, you know, if you go back to that map that showed the sub-districts in the context of the whole town, we could draw a line around any geography in the town of Milton and create a zoning sub-district. But, you know, I think what we've been trying to avoid is disruption and impacts on, you know, existing fine-grained residential neighborhoods. And now obviously, you know, there's, you know, residential neighborhoods, you know, here adjacent to Randolph Ave, and there's residential neighborhoods adjacent to Granite Ave and all of that. But I think what we've been trying to avoid is, you know, just plopping sub-districts in the middle of single-family zones where that's all there is. And so, you know, we've been trying to target properties that are non-residential, potential redevelopment opportunities that aren't going to, you know, disrupt or do have the least amount of disruption to existing single-family neighborhoods. And then our last sub-district is Brush Hill Road over here, which encompasses the existing Fuller Village complex and the 1,200 Brush Hill Road Rehab Center. You know, again, large parcels, existing multifamily, existing non-residential. So we've been taking a look at this one as well. So we asked UTL to come up with two options, you know, using the sub-districts that we've been studying, using the feedback that we've gotten so far. And so there are two options here. One includes East Milton Square and one does not. And we'll talk about the implications of all that in a minute. So option one, compliance with East Milton Square. So again, just to look at the map, we're talking about in the north, you know, the Transit Area Triplex, which is in green, if you can see that. The Matapan Station sub-district, which is in pink on sort of the left side. The Milton Village sub-district, which is in red on the right side. The Granite Ave sub-district in orange, and then the East Milton Square sub-district. So in this scenario, the Randolph Ave sub-districts are not included, and the Brush Hill Road sub-districts are not included. So these are, these are the inputs and outputs that we've gotten from the compliance model, you know, based on some really preliminary dimensional inputs. And so if you look at these columns, so the maximum units per acre on Granite Ave, Matapan Station, and Milton Station, we're at 40 units per acre there. And, you know, I've mentioned this in previous public forums, but I'll mention it here tonight. We arrived at that largely because the existing multifamily housing that we have in the Milton Village Central Ave area already begins to approach that 40-unit-per-acre level. 131 Elliott Street is on almost exactly an acre of land and is, has 38 units in it. So that gets you to 38 units per acre. So 40 is just a little bit of a crank up of that. 88 Worf is on a little bit more than two acres, has 73 units. So it's a level of density that is, you know, 40 is a little bit more than what we've got, but it's not unheard of in these areas. And so we thought that that was a good peg to sort of set the density at those, at those sub-districts. You'll notice in red, and there's this note, red text indicates a parameter that we're fine-tuning to reach a more ideal balance of density and design outcomes. One thing that we've asked UTL to do is to crank down the density in East Milton Square as much as they possibly can and still kind of hit the numbers we need to hit. Because as I mentioned, we would love to be able to get credit for the fact that we are going to be rezoning East Milton Square for mixed-use multifamily. But what we want to do is make it so that the buy right option is, you know, exists and is credible, but also is less attractive than a special permit option, which the planning board is in the process of going through, a process of developing that zoning, you know, as speak. So we want it to be, you know, again, there, but also not so attractive that someone would use the buy right option over the special permit option. And then finally, the parameters in the Transit Area Triplex, maximum of three units per lot. We've set the minimum lot size at 5,500 square feet. We had initially been looking at 5,000 square feet. You know, we had heard from folks that, you know, something closer to the existing minimum lot size of 7,500 square feet might be more appropriate. You know, the problem becomes, in order to, you know, get enough units out of this area, you're sort of starting to draw in a bigger area. There's not as many 7,500-unit parcels as there are 5,500-square-foot parcels. And so we thought, you know, as, you know, something that can approach, you know, a compromise on that issue, we dialed up the minimum lot size a little bit. That allows us to shrink the Transit Area Triplex sub-district as much as we possibly can so that, you know, we're getting to our continuity requirement. We're getting to our zone capacity in the Transit Area requirement, and we're not zoning for extra units that we don't need to achieve compliance. And so under this option, we've got a unit capacity of 2,508 units, which is, you know, a little bit above 2,461, which is the minimum that we need. Acreage is way above the 50-acre minimum at 134 and a half. We're at 19.2 units per acre, which is above the minimum density of 15. 76% of these districts are in the Transit Area. 64% of the units are in the Transit Area. And then 17% of the units are in a mixed-use sub-district. And this is a reflection of the other recent change to the guidelines, which said that we can now create a mixed-use sub-district that can include up to 25% of our unit capacity. And so what we've done is taken that Milton Station sub-district and put that into a mixed-use sub-district, which basically means that we can require any development in the Milton Station area to be mixed-use with ground floor commercial, which is important because it's one of our commercial districts. And, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, we're preserving that commercial tax base. We chose Milton Station instead of East Milton because we have the opportunity in the rezoning that we're working on right now for East Milton to, under a special permit process, require mixed-use. And so again, with the understanding that we're trying to set East Milton at a level where the buy right option is less attractive than the special permit option, we felt that that offered, you know, sufficient protection of the commercial district, you know, if we can get those levels right. I think as a practical matter, you know, this is, it's a lot of speculation. I don't think that anyone looking to develop a project in either of those commercial districts would not choose to have a commercial component. You know, that's what those districts are there for, they've been commercial for a long time. But, you know, it's sort of a belt and suspenders approach to make sure that we retain that commercial area. So option two is compliance without East Milton Square. And so if we decided, you know what, we're already doing zoning in East Milton, we just want to focus on that. Let's, let's take East Milton out, and we'll work on some of the sub-districts we've already been looking at. You know, this is what it would look like. So East Milton is out. The Randolph Ave sub-districts are back in. Brush Hill Road is out. One of the things that we found with the Brush Hill Road sub-district is because the land is so big, in order to zone for it for multifamily at a number of units that we thought was appropriate for the area, the overall density of that sub-district is so low that it was dragging down the overall density of every other sub-district. And so you, the way you solve for that is either you allow many more units down there, which we didn't think was appropriate, given the roadways and given the sort of lack of amenities, or you have to crank up the density in the other sub-districts to, you know, an unfair kind of extent. So we've eliminated the Brush Hill Road sub-district. So similar, similar chart over here for the inputs and the outputs. We've been able to lower the overall density of some of these sub-districts just a bit. So at Granite Ave, Matapan Station, Milton Station, we're at 35 instead of 40. The Randolph Ave districts, the Access Road district at 27 units per acre, Randolph Ave South at 25 units per acre. And for these options, we've also got the unit capacity broken down on a sub-district-by-sub-district level, so you can start to see, you know, how many potential units there are in each of these sub-districts based on these density levels. So the outputs, we're almost exactly at unit capacity at our minimum at 2,468. The total acreage is way above. We're again around 19 units per acre. And then 77% of the land is in the Transit Area. 61% of the units are in the Transit Area. We don't have anything in this iteration in the Milton, in the, in a mixed-use sub-district. We'll want to change that. We'll want to do the same thing for Milton Station as we did in the previous option, which is to get that into a mixed-use sub-district so we can preserve, you know, the commercial development over there. So this is a side-by-side comparison, just of those outputs of the two different options. They're really very similar, you know, even down to the acreage is really similar. And I think it just goes to show the hard work that our consultant UTL has put into this in terms of, you know, really trying to dial in to these minimums and get us sort of as close to the thresholds as we need to get. I think that that unit capacity threshold is a really important one where, you know, I spoke about kind of self-imposed restrictions that the town put on itself. And we've had a conversation about, you know, kind of fairness in terms of spreading these districts around. And one thing that we found is, you know, when you, you talk about, you know, if we want to put a district in every part of town, you're talking about that Brush Hill Road district that is dragging down the overall density and, you know, compelling us to crank up the density elsewhere. You know, you talk about the areas that are covered in the Transit Area sub-districts. And are we going to do Milton Hill? Are we going to do the Columbine's? Are we going to do any of the B or A zone? Are we just going to do the C zone? Are we going to do within a quarter mile or a half mile? And, you know, the more, you know, quote-unquote "fair" that you get in terms of the size and the borders of the sub-district, the more that unit capacity number goes up. And so, you know, if we're interested in limiting or at least, you know, coming as close to that unit capacity number as possible, this, these two sets of sub-districts present our kind of best path forward. So that's it in terms of the latest and greatest on proposed sub-districts. You know, I'll leave it on this slide. You know, there's obviously, if we had, you know, more time, you know, you could, you could test other iterations of sub-districts, although I don't know if you would get much more good quality kind of analysis than what we've gotten so far. You know, I think that these are two credible options. I think we can make a good case to town meeting, you know, that these are good options. I think they, they're each rooted in, you know, genuinely defensible planning principles. So I think it's, it's something that, you know, we would, we would love to get some guidance, you know, both from the select board and the planning board about, you know, which ones, which one of these options to move forward with, because it really becomes a gating issue of, you know, future analysis. The planning board has commissioned a fiscal impact analysis of this new zoning, which I think is going to be really important for the select board, really important for the Warren Committee, really important for the town administrator moving forward about, you know, what do we see as the potential impacts on schools, on town services, on tax revenue? That analysis can't move forward until we have, you know, a set of sub-districts that we're going to move forward with. Similarly, we've been talking a little bit about affordable housing. You know, we are allowed to include up to 10% affordable housing in these sub-districts. If there's an interest in going above and beyond that to 12%, perhaps even 15%, we're required to have a financial feasibility analysis, which again, can't, we can't commission anything like that until we have sub-districts. which again, can't, we can't commission anything like that until we have sub districts drawn up. And then finally, you know, in terms of actually writing the zoning language itself, which, you know, is an endeavor. There's a lot of resources available from the state to do that, but you can't start to do that until you know kind of what your sub districts are going to be and kind of what the zoning parameters are going to be. So, you know, getting that clarity on picking those sub districts is going to be important. And so that's, that's where we are right now. So happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Tim. Comments or questions from members? Ms. Mustow?
Thank you. Tim, thank you for the presentation. I have a couple of questions. The first one would be with the grants that you listed. You talked about maybe two or three of them. Could you elaborate a little bit about that? How much we get from each of those, you know, and over what period of time that we've received those? That's my first question. Second one is, when is this financial impact analysis going to be provided for us to review? And when you're talking about different districts, for instance, Randolph Ave, we had a previous person who had come to Citizen Speak who had some concerns. I'm wondering with the different sub districts that you're talking about, were people notified about that? Because, you know, if we're talking about when somebody goes up and has something, a zoning change like that, potentially affecting where they live, I think they need to get notice of that's, you know, in the formula that we're looking at. So those are my three questions. Thank you.
Sure, great.
Tim, let me jump in if I could. So on the grants piece, these grants affect a lot of different departments and a lot of, so Tim might have viewpoint into some of them, but we'll, we'll go through the list and we'll provide that back to the select board.
Okay.
So I know he knows some of it, but not all of it. We'll pull it together and get that to the board.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll take that one, Tim. You're up for the next two.
Thank you.
What a boss. I love this guy. So Roxanne, you're going to have to remind me your second question. I'm sorry.
I wanted to, thank you. I wanted to know when the fiscal analysis document will come through, like when we'll have that information.
Yeah, so, so RKG, our consultant, is currently working on that as we speak. There's a lot of sort of background work to do in terms of, we've gotten, you know, the town and the school budget in front of them. We've gotten them information from the assessor. They're in a little bit of a holding pattern because part of that analysis is really contingent upon understanding where, where new housing could potentially go and how much of it is reasonable to expect. And that kind of leans on, on the sub districts. So they'll be, they'll be coming to the planning board on Thursday to talk a little bit about their work and offer a little bit more of a specific timeframe. So it's, I don't have a great answer to your question, except to say that we'll have some more clarity on Thursday. So if you're tuning in, you'll, you'll know in real time. And if not, we can update the select board, you know, after that. But we'll know more after Thursday about the timeline on that one. And then, and then finally, the third question on sort of notice to, you know, property owners. It's a really tricky issue because, you know, because the different sub districts have kind of been fluid, you know, up until and even maybe even beyond tonight. It's kind of tough to know, you know, who's going to be in and who's going to be out. And I think one thing that's important to understand is that we're talking about hundreds of parcels and hundreds of property owners that could potentially be affected by this zoning, which is why I think, you know, our commitment to, you know, transparency and, and public information, you know, we've been, we've been hosting monthly public forums. I've talked to Elaine Carroll from the Milton Times on numerous occasions about MBT community zoning. You know, we sent a letter to town meeting members through the town clerk's office. You know, we're trying to get people interested, involves understanding of this process, you know, providing notice to individual property owners that, you know, their property may be considered for rezoning at some point is a sort of a logistical and kind of just, it would be, it would be a process that, quite frankly, my department isn't, isn't capable of undertaking. And really starts to kind of speak to, you know, if you're going to do it for a large property owner Randolph Ave, then you've got to do it for a small property owner on Elliot Street. And it becomes really difficult to kind of manage that on top of, you know, doing the actual work of, you know, trying to figure out these sub districts. And so I think as a townwide issue, we've been trying to treat it as a townwide issue, you know, and get out there in front of people, in front of public meetings and make sure that they're aware of all of this. So, you know, if that's something that the select board is interested in, we can try to figure out a way to do it. You know, but again, it's going to involve, you know, hundreds of property owners. And, you know, it's just a really logistically kind of difficult task to do that.
Good, finish up.
Thank you. Is there a way that we're sending something out to the town's residents that may outline some potential areas that we're looking at?
So the, the, the planning board recently approved a, an insert that they're going to request be put into the next set of water bills that go out. If you're aware of this, water bills go out, I guess, on a quarterly basis. So every, every month, a third of the town gets a new water bill. So that's something I've got to talk to Nick about next week. You know, we've got a flyer that, and this is something that's been done periodically for different efforts in town. But we are going to be requesting that that be put into the upcoming set of water bills that go out. And, you know, the planning board at its last meeting approved a language and a format for that. So that'll be something that, you know, by, you know, prior to town meeting at least, ostensibly every property owner in town who opens up the envelope that their water bill comes in should be aware of this effort. And that flyer includes a basic rundown of what the law is and then, you know, links to resources that, that the town has put together on the town website so that people can get pointed to recordings of our previous public forums, state resources, all of that stuff that we've posted on the website.
Thank you.
Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Evening, Tim. So a couple of points. One is, I, back to what Roxanne said, I was on the Randolph Ave car today. And I was apprised sharply and directly about one of the parcels you made reference to. And it is true, when we're talking about someone's name that they don't even know about on public TV, I think we've, I know you're in the small, you can't tell me, but what, we're putting someone's name out there as their, as their, you know, their primary business. And in this case, a business that's been in town for almost a hundred years. I could see why they were very upset about this. So in that case, there, I think you really need, and for you too, Mr. Maloney, you need to be really careful. He's gotten feedback from his, pushed back from some of his customers. So I just, we talk about communication, transparency. These are our residents, these are who we serve. It's very important. Second point, this is the, so I have two questions, Tim. The first one deals with, I know the open space thing on the Randolph Ave proposals, both of those, both the one in the twelve hundred block and the one in the seven hundred block, the horse farm. So the horse farm plays kind of a vital role in open space. And it's the last one of what were four on that Randolph Ave car for many years, where a lot of people that have horses, they gain access to the bull hills, the riding trails. That's where they come from. So if you were to zone that, either one of those open space parcels and the one in the twelve hundred block also, as you know, has a, has one, there's a restriction on it from the animal rescue league, a five acre restriction for animal use only. How do you, it's almost like they're in conflict with one another. You're trying to outline and preserve open space, but you're trying to get, develop, increase your zoning density. How do you, one against the other?
So are you saying that there, that there's an open space restriction on the horse farm?
No, no, no. What I said was-
Like a historic use?
Right. No, what I'm talking about is, I know that you're looking at townwide again, open space. And you and I have had large conversations about this because everything that happens, the open space diminishes. You know, before Polte was built, there was thirty five acres of open space. You know, like each one diminishes. So if you were to zone these and they would have actually been built, aren't you, again, diminishing two important parcels that currently contribute to your open space?
I, I, well, so I think it's a good point, but I mean, one thing to keep in mind is that it's not public open space, you know, in May that a park or conservation land is. So, I mean, the land, you know, especially the horse farm land has already been rezoned. So the property-
Right, I was aware, I was part of, I'm aware of that.
Yeah. So, so I think it's, it's important to kind of draw that distinction between, you know, a private property owner who happens to have a relatively undeveloped parcel and, you know, publicly owned, publicly maintained, publicly accessible open space. You know, so I, it's a fair point. And I think that there are, again, you know, valid planning principles behind not wanting to rezone those areas. But I think especially, you know, as it relates to, you know, particularly the horse farm, you know, that is, that is a parcel that could be redeveloped, you know, starting tomorrow. You know, if an application come in, came in for the zoning that's, that's available underneath it. So I think it's, it's one thing to keep in mind of, you know, if those, if those, if that type of thing is important to you, and I say you, not just you, but to anyone, you know, it's a reason why you may want to go with a different option for zoning sub districts.
Okay, last question. Condos versus rentals, is there any differentiation? Does it matter? Does, can you just touch base?
You can't, you can't zone for tenure. So, and tenure being rental or ownership. So these could be either or.
So they both count regardless?
Yes.
It's town discretion as to what you're going to approve to put there?
No. So we can't say condo only or rental only. It's just multifamily is the use. And so if a rental project comes in and is compliant with the zoning, it gets approved. If a condo project comes in-
I got it. That's it. That's what I, that was, you just answered what I was trying to ask. So that, that answered. All right, I'm all set. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Tim.
Mr. Zone?
Tim, thank you very much. If, Tim, if you wouldn't mind going back to this slide that had the comparison, because I want to build on what Ms. Mustow and Mr. Wells just said. It seems to me that option one with the East Milton Square, given that the work's already going in on East Milton Square rezoning, and given that option one doesn't include those two Randolph Ave parcels, which have, you know, raised concerns, I think, here that are, you know, I think legitimate. Although, you know, I am also sympathetic to you having to play around with a huge map of town, constantly putting things in and out. Like, I can't imagine if you had had to send notes to somebody that you're in, you're out, you're in again, you're out again. Like, that would have really been a roller coaster ride for a lot of people. But it seems to me like option one would make the most sense just in terms of recognizing work that's already gone in, being in areas that I think are already, have already been sort of under discussion. Is there, am I missing anything with, with, with that observation? You don't have to, you know, your answer would be important to me.
No, I think you're right. And so both options do the thing that I think we're all interested in. And that's kind of taking advantage of the existing multifamily, you know, that we have, you know, via the, the Mattapan Station, Milton Station sub districts. You know, there is some multifamily housing kind of elsewhere in town, but sort of zoning for those areas would present problems that are kind of insurmountable. So both options kind of, you know, when we talk about Brookline, Brookline was able to, you know, zone for their existing multifamily at a level, you know, commensurate with the amount of multifamily that they have. You know, we're doing that in both of these options. Option one, you know, again, there's been a lot of planning and a lot of discussion going on in East Milton, you know, for many years. Residents, business owners, property owners, you know, have all said that, you know, we want to see something to help East Milton grow, to help East Milton kind of achieve its potential, to kind of, you know, highlight the things that we love about East Milton Square. And so that's led us to a rezoning process that we've recently kicked off. And so, you know, that work is ongoing. And, you know, if MBT communities never happened, we would still be talking about multifamily zoning in East Milton Square. And so, you know, again, the thinking being, let's get credit for it. Let's, you know, not do things that we don't already have to do or already don't already want to do. So I think that's a perfectly good and valid observation that you make.
Thank you, Tim.
Other comments or questions? Tim, do you have a recommended option between the two?
I mean, I think that, you know, it's, it's tough. How do you, how do you choose your favorite kid? I don't know. I don't consider E B B to be my kid. I just, we've been working on so long, I feel, attachment to each of these sub districts. But I think that, you know, given the, the idea of, you know, again, if MBT communities never happened and we still wanted to talk about multifamily housing development, we would talk about it, you know, where is the most appropriate place for this stuff to go? And that's adjacent to transit and that's adjacent to existing amenities. One of the issues with, with the forty B projects, and, and, you know, I've said this before, I'm probably more go-go development than a lot of people, you know, in this town. But a lot of those forty B projects were just not, they were not good planning because there wasn't planning behind them. It was just, you know, property owner owns a big piece of property and has a mechanism by which they can make a lot of money off of it via forty B. And so as a consequence, you've got these big projects going up in the middle of the woods and they're auto oriented and they have huge parking lots and they're tearing down all these trees and they're going to put all these cars on the road. You know, during the forty B process, we heard a lot from people, you know, who would say, you know, we're not opposed to multifamily housing, we're not opposed to housing development, we just think it should be in appropriate places. And I think, I think option one presents you with, these are the appropriate places for multifamily development. You know, Mattapan Station, Milton Station, the transit area triplex district, these are transit oriented. These are walk to the train and you're on the train, easy peasy. You know, the East Milton Square sub district, transit access not as good, although the buses will get you where you need to go. But it's an amenity rich district where, you know, you could conceivably, you know, live a lifestyle, especially with, you know, the work from home situation we have with a lot of kind of white collar office workers. You know, this is something that, you know, during the pandemic, the Baker administration commissioned McKinsey to write this kind of future of work in the Commonwealth Report. And one of the things that they identified in that report was the, the opportunity that presented a lot of these historic village downtowns that a lot of these towns in eastern Massachusetts have, where, you know, if, if you're working on a hybrid schedule or a work from home scheme at your office, you know, you still want to have access to those downtown amenities, being able to go for a cup of coffee, grab lunch, you know, go out to eat after work, you know, have access to all these things you had access to downtown in Boston that you no longer need because you're working from home. And so there's this tremendous opportunity for, you know, development and housing in these village downtowns because people want to live there. People want to live in East Milton Square. They do. They're desperate for it. The people that live there now are, they, they can't stop talking about how great it is. And so, you know, that is something that I think, again, has, has a really sort of good planning principle behind it of putting people where there already is stuff. And that's just fundamental to land use planning. Option two, I think, you know, those Randolph Ave sub districts, again, they're big parcels. They're a little bit more wide open parcels so that, you know, you have more flexibility in terms of site planning, you know, rather than some of the existing parcels in option one. But again, you're in that situation where you're further afield from amenities, you're further afield from transit, you're closer to the reservation. You're in it is where, you know, if you had a choice, you really wouldn't want to put housing there. I mean, I think, you know, Randolph Ave, you know, we've seen through the roundabout conversation, through the forty B conversation, through all sorts of other conversations, that, you know, it's a really tough road. And, you know, until, until there's improvements, and those improvements unfortunately, in large part, have to come at the state level. You know, I don't know how much housing you want to be putting in terms of, you know, all the people that would be there, all the cars that would put on the road, all the sort of access issues that you would have. So I think option two is credible. But I think if you can make option one work, it really kind of hits all of the priorities of- if you can make option one work, it really kind of hits all of the priorities of what the law really is about, which is, you know, putting housing where, where it works the best, where people won't need to have, you know, use their cars as much. It, it helps us on, you know, climate change goals, it helps us on, on traffic goals. You know, the, the one thing that option one doesn't do that, that maybe option two does, and again, this is one of the sort of self-imposed restrictions, is that kind of, you know, that, that geographic fairness component of, well, you know, the guidelines allow us to cite, you know, up to 50% of our district outside of the transit area, you know, why would we not do that? Why would we not spread it around so that, you know, everyone kind of has, you know, a relatively equal share of the impacts of this? And, and I think what we were finding is, you know, those areas where would probably be most appropriate to put housing, you know, again, that Brush Hill Road District, the Randolph Ave Districts, were really kind of affecting the overall numbers in a way that, you know, you'd have geographic fairness, but maybe sort of the density fairness would kind of lean, you know, away from, from some other districts. And so I think these two options thread the needle the best way. And I think option one, you know, is the one that I think really kind of puts this housing in a place where, you know, you're going to see the most benefits and, and probably the least impacts.
Mr. Zoll.
So, Mr. Chair, are we looking for a motion here to recommend?
You can certainly make a motion.
So I'd, I'd like to make a motion to recommend option one, the districts in density as discussed and reviewed.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Ms. Musto?
Thank you. I have a question for Tim. Tim, has this been discussed, these two models side by side at the Planning Board yet, or is that being discussed this Thursday?
That'll be discussed this Thursday.
So, a follow-up, if I may?
Sure.
Based on that, I think we should hear what happens at that hearing, not hearing, at the meeting with these two, to get some input from the Planning Department and the Planning Board.
Mr. Wells?
Thank you, I agree. I mean, I, I'm not, I, I hear much of what Mr. Zoll said. I, you know, I know all the areas intimately. I hear much of what Tim said, and I am one of those people, he was describing me, who is now moved and lives and enjoys the amenities of what it's like to walk to the square for so many things on a daily basis. But again, I'm a stay in your lane guy. I, I really don't want to, this is really more for the Planning Board first than us. I don't want to vote on this before they do. I'd rather, in this case, I don't think we have to vote tonight. I think I'd be much, as I said, I agree with almost 99% of everything I've heard, but I'd be much more comfortable waiting to vote after the Planning Board makes a recommendation. And it may very well be option one, but that's what I'm at on it. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and I will say, I, I think it is time-sensitive. I think we have a responsibility to residents to move forward so that we have plenty of opportunity for transparency, and plenty of opportunity for everybody to weigh in on these things, and plenty of opportunity for the Warrant Committee. I think we owe it to the Warrant Committee to move on this so we can get something in early September for them to start moving through. So I, I think it is time-sensitive for us to move on this. Mr. Zoll?
I'll strike my marks. I think we can, I'd just like to go to a vote unless anyone else is-
All right, anything further?
No.
Mr. Wells, is this, is that a-
I just, I just, we put the cart before the horse, it's their lane. I mean, it's Thursday night vote, we can vote in two weeks, I'm fine with that. I mean, what if we vote one and they vote two? It just, we, we want to be unified in this. And, and if it comes out as one, I'd be fine with that. I don't want to vote no, which I will do if you push it this way now. I, as I say, much of what Mr. Zoll said, I agree with, almost all of it. Much of what Tim said in his, particularly about, and I understand that, I follow this very closely. I don't want to vote on this before, this is really the Planning Board's lane. I don't want to vote on this before them.
I, I will say, I appreciate that, it's just that, you know, time is, time is passing, and we have, we have a deadline that we have to meet, so, all right.
It's August 22nd.
Yes, that's correct. It is August 22nd.
I mean that in a, in a, like, August start. We meet again in two weeks.
And, well, we can meet again in two weeks. We're scheduled for September 12th, but, you know, again, we have a responsibility to the residents and to the, the Warrant Committee to give them some visibility on what we're going to do with this. So, all right, so the motion's been made and seconded. Although, this is a roll call vote, all those in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
No.
Mr. Wells?
No.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
And Mr. Zulish, yes. All right. Item 6C is discussion approval request to the, to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities for an advisory opinion on Chapter 48 eligible locations. Mr. Milano, could you tee this up for us, please?
Sure. So, there's a couple of different moving parts that I'll kind of connect to this, but the, the big overall component is that several years ago, the state law changed whereby zoning changes that affect multifamily housing no longer require a two-thirds majority at a town meeting or a town council vote. It is a simple majority. That's for multifamily housing in eligible locations. Eligible locations being described as places with transportation access, access to amenities, primary one being transit access. So, as this proceeds, as things currently stand for the most part, as select boards discuss today, a version of option one would appear to be mostly within a transit area, so subject to a majority vote at town meeting in December. However, portions of Granite Ave Sub District are outside of the transit area, so that might trigger a requirement that it be a two-thirds vote. One pathway to get some clarity on that would be to request a written opinion, advisory opinion from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities about whether, in their view, the area would be in an eligible location and therefore subject to a majority vote. So, in, in the interest of getting clarity for town meeting members, for the town moderator, in terms of what quantum of vote will be needed in December, we're requesting approval, or seeing if the select board wants to submit a request for an advisory opinion from HLC on a Chapter 48 eligible locations, and which eligible locations the board would want us to ask for that advisory opinion on. If, if the preference is an option one, we could just do the Granite Ave. But if you want to leave all options on the table, then we would want to submit for Granite Ave as well as the two Randolph Ave sites, just to have clarity about all of those locations.
Comments or questions from the board members? Ms. Musto?
Thank you. I was just reading this, the guidelines-
Yep.
-for zoning ordinances. I'm wondering if you could comment a little bit, if you have that on page three, bottom of two and three, talks about voting, which voting threshold. Can you talk a little bit about it? Because it talks about having public hearings and things like that. So can you explain that, the order?
This is all related to, and, Tim, you're still sharing your screen if you want to close it out there. Before I start doing other work. Sorry. So, this explains, it partly explains what the process is for any kind of zoning article, where there's a public hearing process, the Planning Board submits a report. As part of that, that recommendation report and other pieces of the process should include comments as to whether this zoning requires a majority, a two-thirds majority, and whether it's in an eligible location. So what we're doing is kind of a precursor to all of that, to say, the state which sets these guidelines, what is your opinion? Is this in an eligible location or not, to then inform each of those processes as we go forward.
So once you get, if I may, so once you get a decision on that, then you would have hearings? Or, I'm a little confused, because it talks about having a hearing and like-
So that's for the zoning article itself, and as part of that public hearing, part of it would be, this is in an eligible location, and the quantum of vote is, is a majority vote versus a two-thirds vote. So it's, it's not a separate hearing process, it's part of the hearing process for the, for the zoning article itself.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
Mrs. Brad-
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Well, having heard this and heard the last conversation, I'd like to make a motion to request to have our Town Administrator and Town Planning Department request to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities for an advisory opinion on Chapter 48 eligible locations under option one, as was just voted on.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. I, I do have a question, and maybe first for Mr. Milano. Is there any downside to seeking the advisory opinion for the locations on option one and option two, both of them? Just so we have all, we have all, all of it on the table.
No, I, I don't see a downside in seeking that clarity. Obviously, it might not be necessary, but-
So, and it's, is the quantum of additional work, is it an excessive additional work?
Yeah.
I think we would prioritize doing Granite Ave, and then we'll move on to Randolph, if Randolph Ave, if that makes sense to the board.
All right. So, so, so given that, I'd offer a friendly amendment to, that we, we seek that advisory opinion with respect to the locations on Granite Ave and Randolph Ave in that order.
I accept that.
There's a second acceptance.
Second accepts.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Wells?
What's the purpose? If you voted to go with option one, why are you going to cloud the issue and not just go with Ms. Bradley's initial motion? If that's the way you're going, go that way.
Sure, if, if that's a question to me, Richard, I'll, I'll, I'll tell you why. There, there may be, we may hear from the Planning Board on Thursday night that there's a better reason to go with option two. And so we may-
Didn't you just say, is it time-sensitive? You just said that to me five minutes ago.
Pardon me, Richard, pardon me, Richard, if I may. So we may, you know, there's a chance that we may change our mind, right? And we may want to have that option on the table. I don't see, I don't see reason not to have all options on the table. Maybe you do, but I don't see an option, a reason not to have all options on the table if it's not an excessive quantum of work. I don't see any reason not to get in the advisory opinion so that everything's out there. Other comments or questions? Ms. Musto?
Thank you. I just think this whole process, I just have to say, is sort of backwards. We're rushing everything through, we're rushing these decisions through, where, you know, we're basing something on something we saw today, we haven't heard from the public really about those two plans, potential plans. Planning Board's meeting on Thursday, and we're still rushing like a steamrolling right ahead. And I just don't understand why we would do that when we have a public process. And this is, you know, the Planning Board's meeting stays Tuesday, they're meeting in two days from now. But yet, we're still going right ahead with all of this. It, it's really unbelievable that, as a board, we're doing that. And I know you want to do that, and the three of you want to do that, but I just think that if, this is a community issue, and I think when we do this, this is what divides a community. When you don't work together with other boards, and then you put other boards down, and you don't listen to what other boards have for input, I, I don't agree with that philosophy, and I, I can't support that philosophy. So I did want to just say that. And again, I think it's sort of backwards. I think they're meeting in two days. It would be great to get feedback on that and then have a meeting. This is August 22nd. Nobody's around in the summer.
So, certainly not a philosophy on my part, and I, I don't think it would be a philosophy on anyone else's part that you suggested. This has been something that's been going on for months. This is information that we've had presented to us for months, and we have a deadline. We have a deadline of December 31st to comply. We have a deadline of December 4th for town meeting. And there is, and, and we have a responsibility, it seems to me, to the residents. We need to think about the residents, and telling the residents, telling the residents what we think, and what we think should be done. And let the residents and the Warrant Committee discuss and debate a warrant article. They can't do that if we don't have a warrant article. So this is the, this is the next step in a month-long process to try to get a warrant article that the Warrant Committee can debate, and the residents can review and debate. And that's, that seems to me, makes a lot of sense. So, Ms. Musto?
Thank you. Mr. Struinski just told us that these two, option one and option two, were going to be debated tomorrow, Thursday night at the Planning Board, and that, that was, I assume, the first time they were going to see those options, because UTL's been working on different scenarios. There've been other scenarios. I've followed a lot of those meetings. We're down to two potential scenarios. Again, I don't know why we wouldn't give the courtesy, two days we're talking. You could have a meeting next week if you needed to, to decide some of this stuff, or in two weeks from now. I understand we're on a short deadline, but again, there are options here of what we could do, and I, I just disagree with this process. I don't think the process is, you know, the proper process, and that's why we'll disagree on that respectfully.
Sure. All right, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, this is a roll call vote, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
No.
Mr. Wells?
No.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
And Mr. Zulish, yes. All right. Item, item seven, we, we did. Item eight is a discussion approval request to the Conservation Commission. And I believe we have for a warrant article to transfer land off Granite Avenue to the Conservation Commission. I believe we have Mr. Kiernan and Mr. Doyle from the Conservation Commission, with apologies for keeping you here so late.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Kiernan. And Mr. Doyle. Welcome back. Don't you wish you were still here?
Your honor, sir.
Let me introduce this initially by saying that last year, in doing reviews of previous town meeting articles relative to land in the town of Milton, it was discovered that in 1965, even though it postdated the creation of the Massachusetts Conservation Commission Act of 1957, and specifically cited that this parcel of land that we're bringing to your attention was designated for the promotion and development of natural resources, it was as well as open space purposes. It was never conveyed to the Conservation Commission. So we can be fully, this evening, with a request that this be placed on the agenda for the December town meeting, special town meeting, for the purpose of conveying this 25 acre of possible land in Milton to the Conservation Commission.
And, and my, my comments will be very brief. John Kiernan from the Conservation Commission. And my points are simple. The first is that we're all familiar with climate change. It's a huge town issue, Commonwealth issue, country, it's affecting human kind. And I think there's broad agreement that the number one weapon against climate change is to preserve and protect open space and our natural resources. And that, that corresponds really to the mandate and the charter for the Conservation Commission, which is to protect and preserve. And in this instance, by conveying the land to the Conservation Commission, I think that the, the select board and ultimately the town meeting would accomplish really two goals. And that is to assign to the Conservation Commission the responsibility for stewardship for this land, and the accountability part, because it does require care. And just recently, we had the opportunity to meet with the town administrator to talk about, how does the Conservation Commission do that? And we're not asking for money, but we are asking for personnel, because part of our responsibility will require that these lands be inspected. And simultaneously with this request, through the offices of Mr. Doyle, we have asked the Community Preservation Committee to give us a grant in order to develop this particular land and provide public access. Because really, there are two parts to what we do. One is to protect and preserve the, the public resources, but the other component of that is to enhance the public access. And the grant that Arthur actually authored, and has gone to the Community Preservation Committee with initial positive results, is to do just that, develop it for public access. So I think we can accomplish a great deal of good with this transfer to the Conservation Commission.
Just to follow up to additional points, the Wetland Protection Act regulations include coastal wetlands. And the statement related to that says specifically, salt marshes are significant to the protection of marine fisheries. And we have the major smelt patchery in the Weeland located just below the Baker Dam and the Ponset River. The prevention of pollution- The prevention of pollution, storm damage prevention, and possibly groundwater supply resourcing. To show you that, and by the way, we have a map that one of our friends participating in this interest located dated 1895, identifying this entire area as salt marsh, with some areas isolated as upland. Tomorrow night, by coincidence, the New England, the Ponset River Watershed Association, by coincidence, as I mentioned, is meeting at Riverside Avenue for a discussion and review of the Ponset estuary. And their agenda says, "One of our residential neighborhoods, most at risk to sea level rise, discuss the challenge of adapting our built environment to climate realities, preserving our natural resources, and the role that green infrastructure can play in managing sea level rise." So, you can see that this is a very broad and involved issue that I think warrants the recommendation that we have before you this evening.
Thanks, Mr. Doyle. Thanks, Mr. Kiernan. Comments or questions? Mr. Wells, your hand is up. Is that for this issue or?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Wells.
Is it okay? Can I ask a question?
Yes, oh, please, yes. Go ahead, Mr. Wells.
Good evening, Mr. Kiernan and Mr. Doyle. Thank you both. John, I think I may have perjured myself in a criminal case in Superior Court. It's actually may have been, it was a death investigation probably 25 years ago, where the town planner at the time showed me a map where it was listed then as conservation, and I testified that what was relevant in that criminal case, which was that I found in conservation, that it occurred in conservation land, so I may have told a lie back then, but.
You are forgiven.
So, just a quick question. Are we referring, so we're referring to the possible land between the 93 car, the back of Colton Circle, stretching all the way over to Black Rock to the Quincy line?
That is correct.
And do we want Quincy to do the same from Black Rock going towards State Street? Or would that be, would it be prudent of us to have a discussion with them about continuing it on? Have they already done it?
The proposal before the CPC, if approved, would involve engagement with the city of Quincy, along with the city of Boston. I walk this area, people in my neighborhood walk it with me. I would say that more than 70% of the people that we speak with either believe this is Quincy land, or they do not know which town the land belongs to.
So, second question, Mr. Chair, if you just.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Let me continue.
Yes.
What about from the Ponset Valley Yard Club side coming in towards Otchess Field? Is that already been deemed conservation land? Or at some point, do we want to include that up through Gulliver's Creek, going up into the back of Squanah Street, that area as well?
Richard, I think that's DC our land.
I don't think so. I, I thought it was too, John, but I, I, in all these, I mean, you know, we've had 100 meetings now on the landing, and when we get into all the Chapter 91 discussions, and I thought it was, they said the same thing, it was conservation. But that's, all right, that's something we can have, we can have a sidebar. The last thing I just want to say to the two of you before we leave tonight, and Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve their request. We will be having a, a water tour with all of the entities involved. Quincy, Milton, Boston, on the Ponset, probably the week of the 11th. And I'll keep you both in, in mind, you'll both get invitations for that. Once we confirm the date, it has to be worked around title, because we have to go two hours before to two hours after. And that'd be my motion, Mr. Chair, to support their request. Thank you both.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Mr. Zol.
Yes, thank you. I, I don't want to delay much longer, but I do want to point out, and it's been mentioned here already, the climate change aspect of this. Saltwater marshes are actually extraordinary sinks for carbon, not just because of the plant life, but because of the blue carbon that you can get in a saltwater marsh. They're usually more, they actually can trap more carbon than forests. So, I'm 100% in favor of this, and thank you, gentlemen, for your patience in waiting for us this evening.
Thank you all. And if I could make a comment, this Saturday, the Conservation Commission has a public meeting to walk this land, and we're doing it jointly with a public meeting by the, the Community Preservation Committee as well. So, at 11 o'clock Saturday morning, we, both committees will publicly walk the land.
Hi. And I would just point out that this is timely, because this is seeking a warrant, warrant article for December, and so it's timely to move forward on articles for December now. And so, I would support this as well. This will be a roll call vote. Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Mr. Zol.
Yes.
And Mr. Zulus, yes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Item nine, discussion approval, citizen petition regarding recording of board and committee meetings. Ms. Milbauer, our apologies for the late hour. And this is actually, it was listed as citizen petition, but the request, I believe, is to have the warrant, the, the select board sponsor an article for this purpose.
Yes, exactly. Thank you so much. Hi. So, my name is Deborah Milbauer, and I am a town meeting member in Precinct Four. I am presenting a proposal for select board consideration to sponsor a new bylaw for the town warrant. And as Mr. Zulus just pointed out, the agenda incorrectly identifies the proposal as a citizen's petition. I'm asking the select board to consider sponsoring the bylaw proposal. My proposal is called Ensuring Government Transparency: A Proposal to Require Elected Boards and Committees to Video Record and Publicly Post Proceedings. This is not about hybrid participation. This only pertains to posting recordings. This only pertains to elected officials, not appointed volunteers. Subcommittee's are exempt from this bylaw. And no legal language has been written yet, but here's a very brief description. All elected boards and committees are required to video record and publicly post the video recordings of Town of Milton government proceedings. Proceedings that qualify are meetings that must comply with the state of Massachusetts' open meeting law and whose members are elected officials. The video recording must be posted online in a publicly accessible platform used for posting town government meetings, such as Milton Access TV. Importantly, Milton Access TV is not required to video, video record meetings that are not negotiated within the contract between the Town of Milton and Milton Access TV. However, Milton Access TV posts recordings that are shared with them, such as via the town Zoom account. Milton Access TV is aware of my proposed bylaw and confirmed that this is doable. They, they confirmed that meetings shared via the town Zoom account or other methods, it's very doable to just post them as they do with other things that are sent to their way, sent their way. Why am I proposing this? COVID changed the way the state of Massachusetts, and in turn, the Town of Milton conducts public meetings. State open meeting laws that allowed remote meetings has been extended through March 2025. In preparation for after March 2025, hearings for statewide legislation about open meeting laws that will require hybrid participation were heard in the Massachusetts State Legislature last month. My proposal is far more modest than requiring hybrid participation. The legal, political, and social landscape for holding and recording government meetings has changed dramatically since March 2020. The use of Zoom and similar platforms is now ubiquitous. Meetings that are not recorded and conducted only in person seem antiquated, given the dramatic change in how the world now operates, including this very meeting. So, a hello shout out to those listening at home due to childcare duties, disability, lack of transportation, or sheer convenience, and to those listening to this recording on your way to work or walking the dog, as I often do. And a huge thank you to Milton Access TV tonight, who makes all this possible, and they're hidden behind the door over there, I see. So, thank you. Currently, elected bodies in Milton have the choice to post meetings or not. Of the 10 elected bodies in Milton, four record and post their meetings, and six do not. The four bodies that post recordings, voluntarily post recordings are Select Board, Planning Board, School Committee, and the Blue Hills Regional Vocational School Committee. The six bodies who do not post recordings are the Board of Health, Board of Parks Commissioners, Board of Assessors, Trustees of the Cemetery, Library Board of Trustees, and the Housing Authority. Of those six who don't post recordings, three meet in person only, two meet fully by Zoom, and one meets in person that would be exempt from this bylaw. The Housing Authority is exempt from this bylaw. In Milton, the inability to access proceedings equitably across all elected bodies is problematic. Sorry, it's freezing in here.
It is cold in here.
All committees deliberate important content that impact all of us, not just the four mentioned above. Compelling all elected officials to video record and post their proceedings is a fair and equitable way to ensure that all of them do so. It is not appropriate that elected officials be in the position to decide if their own meetings will be recorded or not. Claims of limited technological capacity or inconvenience should not dictate transparency. Staff can be easily trained to set up a Zoom and press record on a personal or town laptop. Again, this is not hybrid participation, but simply recording. Easy-to-use tabletop devices that eliminate the need for advanced AV skills are already in use by the school committee, the trustees of the library, and the select board. You guys don't have your owl going tonight, but I, I know that sometimes you do. That tabletop device. They significantly, owls, as they're called, they significantly boost audio and video quality, and a schedule of shared use can be easily set up well in advance. Access to the recordings on the town Zoom account are strictly restricted to authorized town officials and Milton Access TV, preventing unauthorized tampering. Technical diff, technical difficulties may arise, of course, but protocol can be easily put in place to address this. More importantly, the occasional glitch should not be a reason to prevent us from running town government in a transparent way. Although not recording a meeting of elected Milton officials is not in violation of the letter of the Massachusetts Open Meeting Laws, it seems to be a violation of the spirit of the law. When one navigates to Milton Access TV's homepage seeking posted recordings of meetings, it says, "Protecting Government Transparency. Government Accountability Requires People to Pay Attention. With our cameras and microphones broadcasting and recording meetings of local officials, residents are able to keep tabs on what their government is doing, even while they go about living their busy personal lives." And I might add to that, posted recordings sheds light on the many, many hours of thankless service by elected volunteers, because you're all basically elected volunteers, who basically, without exaggeration, enable our town to function. Many Milton residents rely on recordings for critical information that impacts their families and informs their future voting decisions. Milton Access TV has over 1,000 subscribers to their YouTube channel and 1,500 Facebook followers who watch the live broadcast of meetings. And Milton resident Jay Funling's podcast has a few dozen listeners for each of the meetings that he airs. Now that technology and social norms have evolved, the time has come for all of Milton's government proceedings involving elected officials to be recorded and posted for all voters to see. As The Washington Post aptly says, "Democracy Dies in Darkness." In conclusion, I respectfully request that the select board consider sponsoring this new bylaw for the town warrant. I am happy to answer any questions the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Milbauer. Comments or questions from the members? Mr. Zol.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Milbauer. I, I think this is a really great move. It seems to me that the, this is not asking an undue load on the, those existing committees. I think, you know, there, we may have to think about purchase of another owl or two. And I'm, you know, I love the little owls. I think they're, they're cute. They have, the cameras look like eyes. That's why they have that name, so. But I, I, I think that this, this makes sense. I think we probably need a general counsel to weigh in on this. I think, you know, there's a couple of questions, you know, if the owl's malfunctioning, which happens at my workplace every once in a while, what's the, you know, is, you know, what's the remedy for the committee? And similarly, do we want to have a deadline for how long it should take from the, the holding of the meeting to posting it? But I think these are questions that would come out in the drafting of an article, I think, with the advice of general counsel. So, I think this is a fantastic request. I am one of the dozen podcast subscribers, because I actually listen to things on my commute, and it's the easiest way to do it, if you follow, if you follow the podcast.
Go Jay.
But I know that, you know, many people use the Facebook functions and the YouTube functions. I think this is, you know, democracy thrives on citizens being informed, and there's no better way to be informed than to, to be able to, to see a meeting. And for all of the reasons that you listed, you know, disability, convenience, lack of transportation, we should be more transparent, not less. So, I commend you for bringing this forward to the select board, and I'm in favor of it.
Ms. Bradley.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mrs. Milbauer, Ms. Milbauer, for bringing this forward. I had a couple of questions. One is, the warrant committee, when they're doing their subcommittee work, they meet in groups of two with other departments of the town. Are they, would they be considered in this? Or are you strictly asking for this for these listed committees?
So, for right now, I'm not including subcommittees.
No subcommittees? No subcommittees of the select?
The warrant committee's not elected, so they wouldn't fall under this, even the broader warrant committee.
Right. Oh, right. Right. But the warrant committee, right, but the warrant committee is recorded, so I wasn't sure. Right, I understand what you're saying.
Because the, because it's about elected committees, so.
So, it's only elected committees?
As it's, as it's proposed here. Is that right?
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt.
I mean, no, no, no.
Oh, go ahead. Is the Board of Assessors elected? Yes.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know that.
I have copies of this that I'll give to you.
I, I'm reading it right now on my computer. I have it right here. So, I just, I was confused about one of the boards you had listed. I did not know that they were elected, so my apologies on that one. And are you looking for this to be in the December town meeting or the May town meeting?
Ideally, December, but I'll leave that up to your consideration.
Okay.
Ms. Musto, and then Mr. Wells.
Thank you. I think that it's a great idea for transparency. I mean, that's what, you know, for instance, I know I ran on, I know another member did as well. So, I think that's a great thing. I would actually wonder, though, if we could also include, for instance, when I talk about subcommittees, I think of, for instance, like you have a finance subcommittee where we have a select board representative on them. So, I think that would be really important, too, because we don't know, you know, if we're going to talk about elected officials, then I think we should open it up to subcommittees where elected officials are on a subcommittee. Because that's, you know, that's in the spirit of transparency as well. So, thank you for bringing this forward. Thank you.
Mr. Wells.
So, two points. One, I definitely think we need to run this by town council so that we do this legally. Two, I disagree on the subcommittees in, in that the subcommittees aren't staffed. And I believe what Ms. Milbauer was talking about, all the elected bodies she's referred to are staffed, and that's who's going to do it. Because if we get into subcommittees, and there's a lot of them, who's going to do it, who's going to, you know, I, I just, I think the elected bodies is fine, but I think subcommittees, I think that's where we're getting into the issue. But I, I'd be interested, Mr. Chair, Mr. Milano, send this to town council and see, see what they weigh in on, you know, what the suggestions they have.
So, it seems like there's, there's, there's consensus on support for this. So, I wonder maybe if we had a vote to support this in concept and to delegate to Mr. Milano and town council the drafting of an article that would reflect this. Is that?
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion.
Is that, Richard, is that, does that fine with you?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. That's fine with me. I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zo?
Yes.
And Mr. Zulish, yes. Thank you, Ms. Milbar.
Thank you.
The first step of a long road.
Thank you so much.
All right. All right. Without objection, I'd like to move item 13 because Mr. O'Rourke has been patiently waiting for 3 hours and 15 minutes. And it seems to me if we could have him come up, if there's no objection?
No objection.
Seeing none, Mr. O'Rourke. Item 13 is discussion approval of request for service for an owner's project manager for a new school project.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members. My name is Sean O'Rourke, Chair of the School Building Committee, Town Meeting Member, precinct eight. Last night, the School Building Committee voted to approve a request for services for an owner's project manager for the post-school up at Gal Road. What we're looking to do is we're seeking approval from you tonight for, to execute that contract. So we can, not to execute the contract, but to get it advertised so that we can start getting respondents. The kind of timeframe that we're looking at is issue this out, get it publicly out there for respondents to respond to. And then we're developing a subcommittee of the School Building Committee to essentially create a shortlist based on grading criteria that's part of the request for services. And basically, with the respondents shortened down to three, and then those three would come back and interview with the entire School Building Committee and basically ranked one, two, or three. Based on that ranking by the School Building Committee would then present to you what our preferred OPM would be.
Comments or questions from the members? Mr. Wells.
Just a good evening, Sean. So you'd make the recommendations to us, who you prefer? We would actually vote on this? Okay. All right. I'm fine with that. Thank you. That's it. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Any other comments or questions or motions?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the request for services for an owner's project manager for the new school project.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zo?
Yes.
And Mr. Zulish, yes. Thank you, Sean. Sorry for the late hour.
No problem.
Going back to item 10, discussion approval, updated intermunicipal agreement for the creation and maintenance of the SWAP TRIC Shared Housing Services Office. Mr. Milano, could you tee this up for us?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is actually just a, there were revisions made to an intermunicipal agreement that was previously approved by the Select Board on March 7. So the changes that have come in is our expected cost is about $12,000 on a fiscal year basis, and one community dropped out of the intermunicipal agreement. And this is the Shared Housing Services Office, which would provide administrative support to the planning department in terms of monitoring affordable housing projects in town, particularly when it comes to appropriate rentals of those, appropriate processes for renting out the affordable units, monitoring owner occupied affordable units. So it's an asset to our department, to our town staff in terms of making sure that those units are being put out there appropriately and all the laws and regulations be involved in terms of affordable housing here in Milton. And as these 40Bs that we've talked about come online, that demand for that work will increase, and they'll be in a good position to help us out. So just asking for approval of the final version tonight. Thank you.
Comments or questions from the members? Mr. Zo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Milano, since I haven't reviewed the document, but I wasn't privy to the March meeting, as I wasn't a member of this board yet. Can you just quickly, the cost went from what, to 12,000?
So it would remain to 12,000. It just was still an estimate at that time. That's just based on what our anticipated workload is, and really, that's going to fluctuate. We have that money appropriated in our budget as we go through this. And as more units come online, that amount may increase over time. But for now, that's what we think based on the anticipated workload for Milton. Thank you.
Other comments or questions or motions?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Bradley.
I'll make a motion to go forth with the updated intermunicipal agreement for the creation and maintenance of the SWAP/TRIC Shared Housing Services Office.
I'll second.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zo?
Yes.
And Mr. Zulish, yes. So we will go forth.
Is that what I said?
Is that good?
Your motion was that it go forth, and it will go forth.
Can you tell I've been reading my case law?
Item 11, discussion approval proposal for the modular construction of animal shelter located on the dump access road. Mr. Milano, do you have an update?
Sure. And I've distributed this to the board via email, but we did receive a single proposal for the animal shelter project on the access road at a price of $3.45 million without any alternates included. There is a caveat in terms of their proposal and that they had a huge unit cost for ledge at about $720 a cubic yard, where the owner's project manager expected that number to be between $90 and $110 per cubic yard. We are in negotiations presently with Access Construction, who is the lone bidder, to see if they can bring that number down. They've asked for a couple of weeks to review. They may even ask for permission to get on site to do some examination and to work with some site contractors to see if they can bring that price down. So more to come on that, but I just wanted to provide that update to the board so far tonight.
Comments or questions from the members? Seeing none, we will move to, we will go forth to item 12, which is discussion approval of award of $20,150,000 in general obligation bond anticipation notes dated August 30, 2023, and payable on August 30, 2024 to JP Morgan Securities LLC. Mr. Milano?
Sure. Town Treasurer Collector Joanna McCarthy is joining us momentarily, and I'll let her just speak to that issuance that went up.
Should we, is she here or should, oh, she is here. Okay. So we should wait for her.
Hello, friends. I am here.
Thank you, Treasurer McCarthy. It's nice to hear your voice and welcome. Sorry for the late hour.
Thank you very much.
Sorry for the late hour.
Sorry, I missed the first part there because I was rejoining as a panelist here. Did Nick tee this up already?
He, no. In a word, he didn't. He deferred to you, Treasurer McCarthy.
I mean, it's 10:20 at night, guys.
And maybe you didn't hear, maybe you didn't hear that we thank you for being here and we apologize for the late hour.
Oh, no problem. No problem. So this is just, I, you know, I've actually never been, as you all know, this is kind of my first go around with this, but I've never heard the Select Board, you know, or participated in a meeting where the Select Board votes to approve these bans. So we just, we just had one. This is closing, well, anticipated to close on August 30, pending your approval. It's for $20,150,000. And the net interest cost of this ended up being 3.463, which was pretty good. We had six bids. The market was pretty good and responded to our offer. So I think the next steps are, you have this in front of you. I guess what we should also do is talk a little bit about what this is for. Of the $20,150,000, 17.4 million of it is for, let's see, fire department building. Am I right with that, Nick?
Yes. And just at a really high level, $20 million is for the fire station. And $150,000 is for another DPW project, which I don't have in front of you, but you may.
Yeah, that's for paving and drainage improvements. The first, I think it's the second and third phases of those. The town voted on that June 2022. And right, the $20 million is split, 17.4 for the building of the fire departments and 2.6 for the planning of those buildings. So both of those articles were voted on at town meeting. The first one in 2021, the second one in 2019.
And you do have a lengthy form of vote, and the board has been presented with that form of vote and may make a motion based on that form, or you can prefer to read it. Whatever is your preference has been my guidance from Bond Counsel on that.
So if I may, I think what Mr. Milano's saying is we don't have to read the whole thing, having published it.
Mr. Chair, I'd like a motion to approve the bond request and waive the reading of the bond.
Then we don't have to read the whole thing. Mr. Wells?
Did you hear that? Did you hear what I said?
No.
So I made a motion to approve the $20,150,000 and to waive the reading of the bond anticipation, the bond note.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. If I could offer a friendly amendment, we will.
Sure, whatever it is, whatever you want. I'm fine with that.
All right. Well, we're waiving a reading of the entire vote.
Yes.
Yes. That's right. Okay. All right. Motion's been made and seconded.
Well, if you want to read it, you want to read it?
No, I think we're good. No, I think we're good.
2027. No, it's 10:27.
I think we're good. I think we're good. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zo?
Yes.
And Mr. Zulish, yes. All right. Treasurer McCarthy, congratulations.
She sounded like a tinier veteran already.
Well, thank you very much. Thanks for getting this done and thanks for the vote. So take care and for the rest of the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You caught us at a weakened, vulnerable moment so late at night, so it was easy. Item 14 is discussion update of the Massachusetts Department of Transportation project at the intersection of Route 28 and Chikatabit Road. We have received a response to a letter of July 6 from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation authored by Michael J. O'Dowd and on the letter, head of Mara Healy, Governor Kimberly Dursko, Lieutenant Governor Gina Fandaka, Secretary and CEO, and Jonathan L. Gulliver, Highway Administrator. Comments or questions from the board? Ms. Musto?
Thank you. At the beginning of our meeting tonight, we had some residents that came to us with concerns about that letter in regards to what we had asked for. When we had representatives here that were from DOT, I specifically had asked for a couple of things, and then it's not in the letter, and I don't believe we received it. I think as a board, we had asked for another sitewalk because I don't believe that we had a sitework since myself, Mr. Zul, and Ms. Bradley have been on the board. So, you know, that still hasn't happened. We don't have any confirmation of that. We asked them to pause at the 75% design phase, especially when they were looking at the whole corridor. And even discussing it with them, they had said, you know, that if something needed to be changed, then they'd have to go back and change something in the rotary or the roundabout. And so if something came out of that study. So it made no sense that you would go ahead with something and, you know, while you're investigating something else. And we had asked for some short-term solutions. The other thing is, I had pointed out that in their own information that they sent to us, they had talked about four alternatives. And one of them, they provided the data for, and they seemed to be bent on doing the rotary. But there was no data on those other three alternatives, and I specifically asked for that. So they based a decision, and they've provided no data to us to support that decision. They've only looked at that by their own information that they provided. They've only looked at that one alternative. We represent the people in Milton. We have 1,800 people that have said to us, "We don't agree with this." And this is the response we get. So I'm very troubled that that's the response we get from the state on that. My suggestion would be, number one, who have we contacted to get some of these answers? They haven't committed to a sitewalk. They're going ahead with this plan. I feel at this point that I would propose that we have our town attorney send a letter to the state because we have gone through the proper channels. We have asked, we had them come in for a meeting. We've talked to them. We've expressed our concerns on behalf of our residents. And yet they still plow ahead, and they don't give us any answers. No meeting, no answers to how they came with that one plan when they tell us they have three others. They admit by their own admission, sitting here, that they'll look at the whole corridor. And if something, but they still want to go ahead with that roundabout. And if something happens, well, they'll just go back and fix it at the roundabout. They've offered no short-term solutions, and they vaguely talk about one option here. But again, many, many years ago, I will tell you, they were going to do a left-hand turn lane there. That was already going to be done. I don't know what transpired since then till now, but that definitely was there. And that was one of the options that they never provided us data on in their own report. So I'm proposing that we have Town Counsel send a letter back to DOT and reiterate a lot of the concerns that we had in that letter that you had sent, Nick. I thought it was a very good letter that we had all agreed upon and we had all met on. Thought it was a very strong letter. And I think that we send that letter. I would propose, if we agree, that we have Town Counsel draft a letter with some of those points in it and send it to our state delegation. I don't know if we need to send it to somebody like Stephen Lynch, who represents our area as well. I don't know. I think we have to be a little bit more strong here because we are representing our residents. And I feel like they sort of blew us off with this response. And they kept plowing forward. And again, they are the state, but this road is in Milton. We represent the people.
Other comments or questions, Mr. Zo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with Ms. Musto about this. And I'm just wondering, because I'm of the same mindset that you are. Knowing that this is a state road, I wonder if we should have General Counsel look at this issue and come to the next Select Board meeting with recommendations about how to proceed. And then we could then instruct him accordingly because he may come to us with some ideas or suggestions about what a letter might include, that might require some action on our parts. But I think if you were amenable to that, that's, I think, I agree 100%. I think this letter is not enough. I think they haven't answered a lot of the questions that we've put to them as town. I think, you know, 1,800 citizens have asked us to deal with this issue, and we're getting something that could have been written a year ago with like no new information, no acknowledgement of the facts. So I would suggest that we might ask the General Counsel's office to look at this, to come to us with some ideas, and then we can act accordingly based on those ideas. I don't, but I would defer to you if you had other thoughts about that.
Can we just hear from Mr. Wells and then go back? Mr. Wells?
Thank you. I just want to, as you know, Michael, some of the historicals, you know, we're probably six years into this. There was quite a lot of public involvement to both the initial phase, the 25, and then the 50. Full disclosure, as you know, Mr. Chair, I've been of all the numerous crash, serious fatality investigations there. I recall when it was first proposed, the roundabout, I was like, I couldn't even grasp what the more we looked into it. I listened to subject matter, Sbrox, crash investigators, AAA. The safety of the majority of the fatalities and serious bodily injury accidents that have occurred there over the past 20 years, which brought, which is what the data of those injuries is what brought MassDOT back way before that time, was they are angular, the left-hand turn, and that's how they came to the roundabout. So, and I'm not, and I don't say that to, and I can understand both Mr. Zo and Ms. Musto's frustration because they weren't here to perceive any of that. To that aspect, I do wish the state would have been a little more communicative in explaining as to why they chose the roundabout option versus anything else. I understand it, but I'm in a much more informed light than a lot of the other members. So I'm comfortable with whatever you want to do as far as. But I think if they're at the 75% mark, they're ready. Mr. Milano can tell me if I'm wrong, but they're close to being ready to go.
So, Ms. Musto?
I was just reading their letter. And the issue is that they're looking at advertising this in September.
I believe it.
This requires. This requires that the project be advertised by construction in September. And so I think that's something that, you know, again, we're meeting in a couple of weeks, that'll be mid-September, that means that'll be advertised if we don't find out from town council soon. So I don't know if this is something that Mr. Milano can talk with town council about and get back in an email form to us if we approve a concept of something, or we'd have another meeting if we have a specific thing that we could, you know, the next week, say.
So we can ask Mr. Milano to consult with town council on this. We can't really have email communication about what the substance of it is. Let me say this, this, this letter, response to our letter of July 6th, and this is letter, letter sent on behalf of the governor, the lieutenant governor, the secretary of, secretary and CEO of Mastod, and the highway administrator. This letter presumes to talk about needed safety improvements in the long term. But in the short term, he simply asked for a left-hand turn signal. There is a left-hand turn signal already there. It's just not turned on. And in their response to that, they say, all of them say, however, the option to provide these, and they're talking about, well, let me read the whole, the two sentences. "Nastod has considered options to provide short-term left-turn signals. However, the options to provide these in the short term within the existing footprint of the roadway are not feasible based on the existing corridor demand." There's nothing about safety. All they're concerned about is the, the throughput of the cars. That's all they're concerned about. There's no mention of safety. Since July 6th, when we wrote our letter, there have been five crashes in that intersection, according to our police department. Three of those crashes were from the left, from left-hand turns. So if you project that out for 24 months, and they told us that this project would take 18 to 24 months, if you project that out, there will be an additional 80 crashes in the next 24 months without a left-hand turn signal, and 48 of those crashes will be left-hand turns because they simply will not turn on the left-hand turn signal. And their reason for that is not about safety, it's not about efficiency, it's about throughput of cars. It's about cars going through. That's all they're concerned about. That's all the governor, the lieutenant governor, the secretary of Mastod, the highway administrator, and the director of major projects. That's all they're concerned about in the short term, short term, throughput, not safety. So I agree that we need to follow up on this. I agree that we need to follow up sooner rather than later. Perhaps, you know, there was a suggestion that we have a meeting in two weeks. I think it's probably within two weeks. I think it's a good idea. Maybe if we ask Mr. Milano to, to consult with town council on the options, and then perhaps if we, if we, if we can meet perhaps on September 5th, that's the, that's two weeks, right? Then, then maybe we could, we could address, we could address that then, and then that will be, you know, certainly, I, I can't imagine that they'll get their bids out and, you know, I think if we get something out on the 5th, hopefully that'll be soon enough.
It's Labor Day weekend right before, so.
Right. So it should be, so, so maybe we do that. So, so if, if that's the consensus, the board, then we'll ask Mr. Milano to see what the options are and present us with those options sooner rather than later.
I think it's really important that we do that for the residents. And I'm troubled by this letter as well, Mike. It doesn't address what we wanted it to address, and it's basically blowing us off, is what it is, and the residents, you know, and that's wrong. And I think they need to be accountable for that, so.
And Mr. Chair, if I could add that my takeaway from it was, you know, they committed to this corridor study, but you're, you're highlighting their focus on throughput. That corridor study, how, how helpful to Milton will that be when all they care about when they're, you know, deciding between safety and, and moving cars through, if every time they choose moving cars through? And that's going to reverberate throughout the corridor study as well, so.
Right.
Just another takeaway that I.
It's a very simple thing, to turn on the left-hand turn signal.
Yep.
Turn it on, and, and there will be fewer crashes. So, all right.
Mr. Chair, if I might?
Mr. Wells?
If I might? So I do believe one of the issues that compounds that is DCR. The DCR periodically now, but usually more regularly, was shutting down Chickatahabe completely from Friday at 5:00 to Monday at 8:00. And that's how it started, because this goes back to when I was chief, but they still do it at times. They shut that, they shut that street down. And that, that was, the left-hand turn signal there was becoming a causal effect because people were coming up anticipating that they could turn left, starting to take the left, they see the gates across, they try to, and then leads into a serious accident. So I, I noticed that a couple of weeks ago they did it, and as I'm listening to you talk now, it's all kind of coming back to me a little bit, and I'm wondering if somehow DCR played into that decision.
It, it may well have been, it's, it wasn't, wasn't anything that was told to us in this letter. All they mentioned was the existing corridor demand. So, so it may well be, but it wasn't, they didn't, they didn't point it out to us if that was a reason.
Do we, we don't, Mr. Chair, we don't need a motion then?
I think we have a consensus on how it, how to move forward on this. All right. Item 15, discussion approval committee appointments and reappointments.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Doug Cheibek to the local historic district study committee for a term to expire on June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells? Mr. Wells?
Please don't mute. Nope. There he goes.
Oh, you're still on mute, Richard?
Oh, no, we're frozen.
Oh, we're frozen.
Yep, frozen, frozen in time.
I'm like, wait, I'm moving my glasses and nothing's happening.
I look thoughtful at least.
All right.
You look thoughtful.
All right, so. Not sure what to do here. I'll have to.
Do you think it's this internet?
There we go, we're back.
The Milton TV feed has gone down.
Oh.
Oh.
It went out very briefly earlier as well.
Looks like we're recording, and I don't, I don't see Mr. Wells on here, so.
Yeah, the Zoom is still active. It's, it's their feed that's picking up the audio, video, and sending it out of its sound, so nobody is hearing anything at the moment.
Okay. So we should wait for them?
Recording in progress.
All right, so now we need to get Richard back.
When this happened earlier, I noticed he dropped off.
He might have to call back in.
I'll have to come back on.
Probably thought I was about to do that.
Oh, right, right, right.
All right, so, so, so do you want to maybe send him a quick text to jump back on, or?
Sure. He's back now.
Oh.
So does that mean that we have to start that one again?
I think it's up to him to vote, right?
Yeah. Richard, we're, we're up to you on the, the, the vote to appoint.
Yeah. Go ahead, yes, I'm sorry, I got kicked out. I had to log back in.
Yeah, it wasn't your fault.
So, yes, yeah, which, which one are we on? Doug Cheibek?
Cheibek, yes.
Yes, I vote yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
And Mr. Zulish, yes. Item 5, 15B, Youth Task Force.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion, this is an appointment, not a reappointment, correct? I'll make a motion to appoint Robert Beto to the Youth Task Force.
I'll second.
Do we have a recusal on this?
We do. I have to recuse myself on this. This is my son.
Okay.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. Item 16, discussion approval, meeting minutes, July 11, 2023, July 25, 2023. Oh, Ms. Musto, sorry.
So I'll make a motion to approve them.
I momentarily froze.
Like on TV. And I did talk with Lynn about a few little things, like typos and things like that, so Lynn, right? Yeah, okay. Yeah. So I'll make a motion to approve both sets.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded with the amendments. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
All of us, Dan.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
And Ms. Zulish, yes. Item 17, Town Administrator's Report.
Given the late hour, I'll just make two quick announcements. Police Department's Community Night Out is this Thursday at 5:00 PM at the Milton Police Department. And then there will be an open house on Monday evening at 5:00 PM at the Fire Department ahead of the Tuesday deadline for the civil, to sign up for the civil service exam. So if you're interested in, in fire service, come down to the Fire Department Monday at 5:00, 7:00 PM. Firefighters will be available to talk about the job, about Milton, about the process to get hired. Good opportunity to learn some more before the exam. Exam deadline to sign up, should clarify.
Is that at the headquarters?
That is at the headquarters, behind Town Hall. And board and committee openings, they are continually updated as to what is open on the town website. If you are interested, please volunteer. We are constantly seeking volunteers, so we appreciate anybody's interest.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Given the late hour, I will defer on the chair's report. Item 19, Public Comment Response. Ms. Musto?
I just wanted to say I really appreciate when people come and speak to us about all different things that affect them in the community and as well as when they zoom in and do that. So just to keep encouraging people to come. Thank you.
All right. Item 20, Future Meeting Dates. Talked about adding a, a date of the 5th. We have had the request from the neighbors, and this will come up in our Governor Stoughton here, Governor Stoughton meeting, but the request with the neighbors at the Town Farm was that we have a hearing on the 19th rather than the 5th. And so we could go forward with the 5th and talk about this, following up on the Chickatahabe letter, and also to the extent our warrant articles are timely, we could, we could discuss the warrant articles as well, to the extent that we have warrant articles on, on, either on the, on the Conservation Commission or the MBTA Communities. Mr. Wells?
You want to move the 12th to the 5th? Is that what you want to do? You want to move the 5th to 12th and the?
I was going to add the 5th, you know, hopefully a shorter meeting, but, you know, some of these items are, you know, are timely. So if we can do it, and if we can do it, that would be, I think, useful, so.
Okay.
All right. Any more on that? Oh, Ms. Musto?
So that would be pretty much every Tuesday for the month?
Yeah, it would if we have the public hearing, yeah. It would be a busy September. The residents are very interested, the Town Farm residents, you know, they're very interested in, so I, and that's really our only, you know, our only week that's open, so I'd like to do that if we can.
So that would be the Governor Stoughton would hold that meeting?
Exactly.
We're going to talk about that when we get to that.
It would just be a public hearing by the Governor Stoughton trustees to, to hear the residents talk about the, the Town Farm. So that would be the 19th. Their, their request was the 19th over the 5th. I gave them those two options in September.
Sure.
They said the 19th was better.
Okay.
So, all right. Now, are the executive session items ripe, Mr. Milano, or would they be riper later?
Well, I'm wondering if, Mr. Wells, if I'll defer to you, I don't know if you have anything new on the Town Landing stock. Perhaps if we have a shorter meeting, it would be, makes sense to move that executive session on Town Landing to the, to the night of the 5th. It's something that's been tacked on at the end of our nights several times in a row now.
What about?
That's, I'd rather move, I mean, it's only going to be five minutes if I could, but if you really want to move it to the 5th, that's fine.
Okay. And then what about the firefighters?
Firefighters is not time-sensitive. I would just take advantage of it and the executive session update you.
All right. If that's okay, then, if that's okay, then, Richard, if, if you want to do it now, but if you can, if it can wait till the 5th, that'd probably work a little better rather than having MATV go into executive session, out of executive session. It will, it will add, add a little bit of cycles to the meeting.
All right, I'm fine. I'm fine with that.
All right. Item 24.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion's been made and seconded. All those favor, all those, any discussion, all those in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
And Mr. Zulish. Now, we will quickly adjourn, we will quickly call to order a meeting of the Governor Stoughton trustees, and the only item on the agenda is to set a date for a public hearing regarding the use of the Town Farm for affordable housing. We talked about doing something in September, and we have heard from the residents, the neighborhood association on the Town Farm, their preference is to do it on the 19th.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a.
Mr. Chair, I'll make, okay, go ahead. I'll second Mr. Zulish's motion.
To set the date of September 19th for a public hearing regarding the use of the Town Farm for affordable housing.